The committee, the whole is back in order. We were in page sixteen on line eleven, section, uh, line eleven, which is D in the Civil Service Commission. Senator Jesse Luhann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just need a point of clarification. I understand that yourself being the acting lieutenant governor and the speaker of the legislature, being the acting governor, I'm just wondering in regards to the separation of powers that if in fact you still, I know you're still the senator and so is the speaker, you're still senators and still have the vote of in the legislature, but because of separation of powers and assuming the, the executive branch's powers now temporarily at least, that are you, did you guys have to temporarily resign your posts as senators to assume that? Because now we have yourself and the speaker who are now bosses of the executive and the legislative branch. Is that a separation of powers issue or can that be clarified?
Yeah. Senator, I do recall, and I, and I can as speaking for, as, as a point of information, this has occurred quite a few times in the past where you would have the governor and lieutenant governor off island and there would be a, an assumption of the role of governor and lieutenant governor. And I do recall it was Speaker Forbes and, and Vi, and I think it was Speaker Tony and Pinkel and I think at the time Mark Forbes or, or Joanne Brown, were, were in the position of governor or acting governor and acting lieutenant governor, but never in that time did they relinquish their roles as, as, as senators as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to get clarification on that and I just wanted to make sure that this session today is, is not null and void based on the separation of powers.
Yeah, so on this question brought up, yes, Senator Shimizu.
Now, just, no, that's to make light of it, but that wouldn't mean the Democrat will be the majority? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just point, point of information and happy Easter.
Happy Easter. Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Chairman, I'm not completely altogether convinced with that arrangement. For example, I'll just ask you one question. What hat do you wear now? Are you wearing the hat of a senator or are you wearing, still wearing the hat of a lieutenant governor? You cannot wear both. I mean, that's, that's common sense.
Yeah, Senator Palacios, I'm right now, I'm wearing the hat as chairman of the Committee on Finance and Taxation and I'm chairing the Committee of the Hall.
So technically there's no lieutenant governor in Guam as we speak?
Technically, there is an acting lieutenant governor.
And who is that?
Which is myself.
So you're still wearing both hats?
I guess I could wear two hats.
See, that's the issue, see? I mean, that's, I just want to point that out because...
And I, and I can remind the senator that this has occurred in the past and I do not, I have not access to, to case laws on previous states. I do recall that Senator Luhann has mentioned in discussions with Speaker Forbes that there are certain cases and that, that have gone through the courts where this particular role can be had by both at, at simultaneous times.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm okay with that. I have no problem with this, Mr. Chairman. I just don't want this body to face a challenge of whatever the decision we make today to come back and then give us a problem. I just want anything we do here today will be free, you know, would not be challenged and, and that's, that's my concern. I, I want it to proceed, you know, properly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I believe that the body has the prerogative, of course, to create laws and if you are in the position of signing those same laws, which actually I believe has happened in the past, the speaker has basically passed laws and signed off on it and tested to by the secretary and has been signed into law by the governor and happened to be the speaker who signed off at the time. I think this can be brought to some legal question to our legal counsel and if any of the members have an issue with proceeding forward, then they can always raise the issue and an objection, but in the absence of that and without legal input to the contrary, I think we should go ahead and proceed because I think time is still the essence with regard to this issue. So I think the, if there are any other members who object to your chairmanship or vote on any matter on the floor at this point, then they can go ahead and make that objection, but in the absence of that, we should go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. No other comments or questions. We are now in page sixteen, D, and this is the Funding Appropriations for Civil Service Comm, Commission. We are in D. Oh, by the way, I'd like to also introduce this morning, Mr. Vern Perez. Vern, good morning.
Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. John Cowell. Von Cowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel Administration.
And Mr. John De La Rosa, representing the administration. Okay, we are in Civil Service Commission. Senator Pangalina.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Vern, the, the separation of the two functions of the Civil Service Commission, as such, now requires your sector, I guess, or of the operation to basically just administer the hearing process and the grievance process. Is that correct?
Primarily, Senator. Thank you very much. We also have a couple of residual, what would be non-adjudicatory types of responsibilities of jurisdiction. Those in particular are, of course, the Mini Hatch Act Administration as well as the Ethics in Public Contracting. Otherwise, at least in the law, we know that the law has changed and still leaving with the commission the, the administration of that quasi judicial function, that of hearing appeals and perhaps whatever else the Department of Administration rules and regulations as well as the rules and regulations of all agencies still have remaining and that are unchanged.
So the, now with, with the separation of the two operations, basically, have you added any new staff to your department?
Yes, we have. We, we had asked for some additional staff when we first made that transition because as you recall, in, in the law, it indicated three staffers by way of a memorandum of understanding with DOA. We executed that. We were always interested in additional staffers because notwithstanding the jurisdiction change in the law, we still had residual work and, you know, I can tell you that we know appeals have increased substantially, actually, in the last couple of years. I have some numbers for you, but we did ask for the addition of two staff or to keep two of the staffers because originally nine had transferred, so we asked for two remaining. And then recently, we also had one additional staffer come forward, a secretary.
The most recent staff hire was a?
Secretary.
And where did that secretary come from?
My understanding is from the governor's office area. I'm not sure exactly what, what area there, but from the administration.
When you separated the two, you, you thought you didn't, you basically had the, the prerogative, I guess, in the separation to decide what staffing was needed and so forth, and at that time you didn't hire the secretary?
No, no, we didn't. Well, the person that, one of the people, of the two people that were added is a clerk type, is three, and actually, to be perfectly frank, we, you know, a lot of responsibilities was placed on that person because we no longer had an administrative services officer. And of course, you know, it's an agency, however small, and things still need to get done. And we had that person, the clerk type is three position, as well as a personnel analyst, management analyst position. Those are the two previous.
Now, being, being in the Civil Service Commission, didn't you think that perhaps you would have announced the position, recruited for the position and all that, and instead all you got was a referral from the front office and you accepted that referral? Is that correct?
Well, ideally, I mean, if we have the cash outright to begin with, certainly, you know, classified employment is probably the employment you'd always want to engage in if, if you had the opportunity. At the same time, we know that we have traditionally relied on the administration's infusing cash at the end of fiscal years to accommodate the needs of the, the Civil Service Commission and that, that's kind of the route we're taking now. Continuously, we want to make sure that, that funding is going to be there and if, you know, if it's not available, then it's not available. I can say that, you know, we, we do expect the continued support of the administration with respect to those added employees and, you know, not knowing exactly how, how certain funding is, you know, I, I can understand, I would ask you to understand, I suppose, the use of, of an opportunity to have a, an unclassified personnel added, but the two previous ones were classified. Yeah, and those were previously employed at the Civil Service Commission.
And, and this person was transferred or you, you brought this last person on when?
The most recent one was, would be about a month ago, about four weeks, four and a half weeks ago.
Right when we're trying to save money and so forth.
Well, we, as far as our savings are concerned, we know we've always had a need. We, we definitely have a lot of work at the commission and we'll continue to do the best we can and we think we're doing a good job. We're not delaying, to the best of my knowledge, not delaying hearings and any employee that wishes to, to file an adverse action or grievance appeal, certainly they'll be received with the commission and will be processed.
Thank you. Just for the record, I, I think that it was a policy mistake to separate the Civil Service Commission. Thank you.
Thanks for that statement.
But I don't know with this latest move, though.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangalina. Senator Shizaki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Morning, gentlemen. You know, just to pick up on where Senator Ben left off with the separation of the functions of civil service, are we providing the services that adequately to the departments today as a result of that change?
Because the law changed and did not allow for the transfer of the null and void authority, my answer to that is no. It is my belief, and I'm, I'm sure I speak for the commissioners on this, that there is no function for which any agency personnel action can be checked. I'm checked as, as being either, you know, correct or wrong. What traditionally has been the null and void authority of the commissions, those seven independent members, did not transfer to the Department of Administration. What transferred to DOA was compensation and classification administration, but if there is a personnel action in the government of Guam, someone gets paid too much, someone gets paid too little, someone gets hired without the proper qualifications, no one can do anything about that administratively, except perhaps an employee who's making a complaint can go to the court. Otherwise, there's not that administrative venue to, to correct that. And it's a service, I think, because most of the time, of course, if the Civil Service Commission through its staff or through its board would say, hey, some personnel action, call it personnel action A, was incorrect, nine times out of 10, the agency that engaged in that personnel action will acknowledge perhaps a mistake or something wasn't covered the right way and it's, it's settled, but it's not in court. There's not extra time that's involved. It's not extra money that's spent on lawyers or otherwise, but that's not there anymore. So I think there is a lack of service to agencies and I think, you know, agencies, they should be bold with their personnel actions. If they're correct, they have nothing to be afraid of. Unfortunately, no one could really review them except the agency head, him or herself, and, and whoever's affected, but oftentimes it's probably much better helped and there's a service that's missing if an independent commission through its staff can assist in, in analyzing some of these personnel actions. So the answer is no.
So an example might be some of the questionable promotions that were done at GPSS, perhaps?
Uh, yes, that, that would be one instance where we might fill the complaint at the Civil Service Commission staff-wise and we know we've had questions from even some senators about that, but the truth is there's no more jurisdiction to go and, and analyze that. You know, they could have been done right and we know at, at one point there was some agey opinion on the matter, which is fine. My impression is, I, I don't want to speak for Alicia, but she probably, you know, wants to be concerned with, with other matters and there, there should be some venue to address these administrative personnel actions. Unfortunately, it's not there anymore, but yes, that's one instance. There, there have been others we've kind of heard of about some personnel actions which compensation might not be set appropriately or, you know, the competitive process wasn't used adequately. And, and you just like to think the system has a check. Unfortunately, it doesn't have that check right now.
And this also, I guess it also extends to autonomous agencies that oversight is no longer available for, for all of us?
That is correct. I am aware of no, no administrative review opportunity for autonomous agencies and we know that they, they carry a tremendous amount of the government workforce. Again, if, if they're done correctly, then the agencies should be confident about meeting their mission and getting these personal actions done correctly, but there are those instances where things are hurried, where things are under pressure based on budgets, where they might miss something, they may not cross a T or dot and I, and unfortunately, if someone makes a complaint about it, it, it simply can't be received anywhere because null and void doesn't exist in law anymore. That change in the law that occurred just wiped it out completely and as we stated at UOG at a forum, well, if we're asking for more litigation in the courts or turning a blind eye to what will ultimately be inevitably be problems, that's, that's really what's happened.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. You know, I'm looking, I'm looking at your budget, the, the proportion for Civil Service Commission is designated to be 455, 979. In the previous budget, that was not separately identified, I, I recall, so is this an increase or a reduction from your current operating level?
I think that number that you just provided may represent some increase, but I know that there's also some, some frustrations in the budget, at least for us, because we're in the process of having to rebid for our lease and, and of course, we've had those two transfers previously and with one recently. Our, our thought is, again, the numbers that the administration will provide, I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful that they will continue to support the Civil Service Commission, appreciating that transfers have occurred, appreciating that, that we will have, you know, that lease issue to address, but, you know, I'm confident that they will support the commission, that there will be ultimately, depending on what this body determines through lapses and transfer authority, that the personnel at the Civil Service Commission will be accommodated as it has been in the past.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Shizaki. Senator Judith Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, colleagues, and good morning to our Civil Service Commission representatives.
Good morning, Senator.
I want to go back to the secretary position that was recently filled in your agency. Was that a classified or unclassified position?
That, that is an unclassified position.
Was that the director's secretary position?
That is correct, which I've not had filled for, since I've been there for several years.
Did you select the person or was a person referred to you?
Be the latter. It would be a referral because it was a transfer.
Okay. You know, we're seeing sort of a trend with respect to individuals leaving the governor's office and moving, being moved to other agencies and departments and the concerns are with respect to creating an appearance that the governor's office is shedding personnel, reducing its costs. Was that position transferred into your budget or was the monies transferred with the position?
It's my understanding that the monies to accommodate that transfer will be made available. Again, as I indicated, I think to begin with, our, our budget is not, is not well as it stands and, and we, I really do expect that the support from the administration will, will be provided for any addition that, that they would be approving.
So there really isn't a reduction in, in the governor's budget expenditures for personnel if in fact they are transferring personnel along with the costs of those personnels to the various departments and agencies, would just be a savings in terms of the number of people up there?
I, I suppose you could put it that way. There's no question, while I don't run that, that budget, in our position, appreciating there is work, just because we know appeals have increased and there is plenty of work for us to do at the commission, we're, we'll be accepting of any, any potential transfer which we do expect to be funded.
Okay. Now, on some other matters, the, the new law that reorganized the civil service responsibilities and transferred them over to the Department of Administration left your side with fewer duties, but the big issue is the fact that there now seems to be a void of any real basis for auditing the personnel actions that are occurring in the departments and agencies. Is that correct?
I think that's, that's a very fair statement, yes.
So in reality, a director and/or a governor could, if they wanted to misuse the personnel hiring system, is that true?
There, well, there's always the opportunity to misuse it. The thing is, is someone going to catch it? And yes, there, there's, there's that likelihood that if there's an errant personnel action that even if someone knew about it and knew it to be wrong, there's the potential that that could continue and, and go unchecked, as opposed to the previous situation where a personnel action deemed illegal or inappropriate may be deemed null and void by, again, the Civil Service Commission, not, not by the staff, but by the commissioners. And in those instances, almost always, if, if we ever caught something, something came to our attention and plenty comes to the attention of the commission, then, you know, we could, we could simply call and write, determine some things and, and settle the matter, basically, but unfortunately, that, that is gone and, and I'm, I'm so glad for this line of questioning because it's, I think it's, it's certainly right, you know, this, this is a new legislature and we know the laws have changed and, and I ask everyone to think about it if I could just, you know, again, expound a little, only because I think it's that important. You have the opportunity for personnel actions to be wrong and incorrect, although I'm saying, I'm not saying anyone's ill-intentioned, but in those instances, even if it's an honest and inadvertent mistake, the, the correction mode or method doesn't seem to really exist at this point.
And of course, what would be your recommendation to resolve this matter? What would you suggest?
Well, my recommendation, you know, goes back to that budget hearing that occurred a year and a half ago that said that the jurisdiction will change tremendously for the commission. Now, we understand that primarily compensation and classification has gone to DOA and, and we will work with DOA the best we, you know, we can, as all agencies should, but the null and void authority, that went nowhere and we think that is most appropriately placed in a commission that's made up of seven independent members that are appointed by terms that, that really are, are answerable to, to themselves in that sense. And again, we, we think we've had mostly cooperation from agencies, autonomous and line alike. Unfortunately, however that law change came, I don't think it was thought well enough through to determine what the ramifications would be.
Well, I, I, the reason I'm questioning you, Ms. Perez, and bringing these points forward as well is because we receive calls all the time as senators from constituents, from concerned government employees that are seeing things in the agencies that are very disturbing, people appearing in their agencies very quickly into positions, being compensated at levels that are much higher than others who are filling the same type of positions. And of course, they're very reluctant to publicly complain about it and they, they say that if we complain, we risk alienation or retribution or, or other things. And I think that we as senators need to hear this so that we can very deliberately consider an amendment in the budget bill, which I would like to introduce, which would return the null and void oversight to the Civil Service Commission. And I'd like to ask my colleagues to please support that amendment at the time in which it is offered. The merit system is an obligation we have under Guam's laws, under the Organic Act and under good personnel management practices. And particularly at this time when employees feel insecure because of receiving furlough letters, even though as Mr. De La Rosa said, there's no intention at this time to implement them, there are a lot of employees that are very insecure at this point and when they see things around them where people mysteriously appear in classified positions and they're not certain of their qualifications and/or right to certain salaries for those positions, it creates a lot of demoralization and we have a responsibility to reinforce that merit system, make sure it's working properly and to have an audit function over it. So I, I will definitely introduce the amendment to return the null and void authority to the Civil Service Commission, the audit responsibility over personnel actions to the Civil Service Commission. And I'm also thinking of asking my colleagues to support as part of that amendment, further authority to the public auditor's office, to work with your office, to review all the personnel actions that have occurred over the last eighteen months since the Civil Service Commission was sort of changed. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Senator Jesse Luhann, we are on C or D, Civil Service Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morning, gentlemen. Vern?
Senator.
Just so you know that your situation that you're in right now, I never support it and here we are today in that situation. And let me, let me go back to, to that line of questioning, the null and void situation you have, that we have now. If the commission were still intact, as it were, prior to, to the previous budget, situation at GPSS, would, would you think that have occurred, would it, that have occurred should the situation still have been the same with the Civil Service Commission?
I know that there was opinion that was issued recently on that exact matter, on that question. At the very least, there would have been clarity because if there was, if it was unclear on how to apply a statute, you know, that was clearly personnel-oriented, then, then we could certainly provide whatever advice as might be appropriate. We know that there was problems with language in that bill. We know that there were some thoughts to correcting those, but, but be sure that if, if the question came up and the clarity was requested, we, we would certainly do our best as staffers and then, and utilize the commissioners as well to provide that and, and hopefully it would have been administered as best possible and as correctly as possible. But, you know, not having done the research on it, you know, I, I can't say just, just offhand, but I can tell you that if there were a complaint about it, there would be that venue for us to look at it, certainly.
And again, it would be, it'd be unfair to ask because I'm sure you've kind of taken an arm's length view at it without being asked the question, basically posed on you to do the research on it, but I'm sure on a timely basis, you would have had the opinion on that based on, based on the intent of, of the law. I mean, it's very easy to see the intent of the law, just get, go back to the audio room and, and get, you know, the, the arguments on the floor to see the intent of, of, of that bill has, has passed on, on the floor with that.
Correct.
Anyway, again, I wasn't, I wasn't in support on, on the dismantling, again, of, of the commission, most especially before a, a public hearing were to, to, to occur. Again, things could be brought on the table, but publicly heard to have the all sides to be able to, to, to present their, their, their views, but to, to bring things in, in, you know, the midnight hour as we're winding down and trying to get things done, to do things like that, I think is not a form of democracy that, that I, that I adhere to anyway. Let me go back to the, to the, the transfer of the, of the secretary position. Again, let me reiterate, you had already said that's the unclassif, she's, she or he is an unclassified position? Unclassified position?
It is unclas, yes.
Okay. And basically it's a personal secretary?
That is the position filled.
Okay. Now, that position as a personal secretary, does that come with a full funding transferred from the governor's office? Is it, has it been transferred over to, to the Civil Service Commission already or, or is that now, you, you transfer the body, but now the money has to come out from, from your budget?
I understand it, that the transfer has occurred with the, I guess, every intention that it would be funded along with the rest of the, the, the positions that we have at the commission so that it doesn't necessarily eat into the, whatever the previously established budget numbers would be, but the funding will, will occur.
Okay. Now, let me ask, the intent is for the money to follow, okay, but the, this last paycheck, who paid, who paid this person? Did it come out of your, your funding or did it come out of the governor's office?
Oh, I, I think it's, it's already built into, into our, our funding or budgetary.
Okay, it's built into yours, but you don't know as of yet if the money, the money had followed, right?
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not certain the money has followed, but again, I understand that it...
The intention is the money to follow.
Correct, correct.
How much does this position pay?
Um, I'm, I think it's 24, 25,000 dollars.
24, 25,000 dollars.
Yeah, probably, maybe about, I don't know if that's equivalent of a step four in the secretarial position.
The reason why I'm saying that because to me, I'm sure I've got, I've got, air conditioning needs to be... air conditioning needs to be fixed for thirty thousand dollars. And so, you know, that comes real close to fixing, uh, to moving elementary. Anyway, I just want clarification of that, and maybe you can get back to us and to, to find out, again, if, if the money did follow, uh, I'm sure it'd be easy to track if, if in fact the money did follow, uh, at least to the, how, how long has this person been there?
Um, it's about four weeks, I'm thinking.
Four weeks, so two paychecks, basically.
Um, I think, that's correct. This would be the second, that's right.
Okay.
And, and just, Senator, thank you for the question, and we, we do, again, do expect that the, it will be accommodated, and that's, that's been our approach to it. Uh, but certainly, I will let you know, um, we know appeals have increased in the last three years, um, up seventy or eighty percent. And, uh, we have, we have plenty of processing to do for status conferences, and, you know, status calls, and, and administering that, that appeal process. Um, and, and we're very, very happy to hear this board, or this, this body contemplate, even if it's one member at this time, I certainly would invite all of you to consider the, that null and void issue, just because, um, we certainly think it's an important one, and it's our hope that if you work well with these agencies, which nine times out of ten occurs, it's good, because there's a check, everybody understands each other, and that's fine. Um, and if it's done well, there's really nothing to be afraid of. But at the same time, if you want to pose questions, or the, the public does, there's, there's really no venue for that. Thank you.
Thank you. One more question, um, Vern, um, how many commission members do you guys have?
There are seven. The board is, uh, filled at this time.
Seven?
Yes.
Seven members? Okay, um, are your members compensated on a monthly, monthly basis?
Yes, there are, I believe, only three boards that are, uh, compensated at this time, according to the law.
Okay.
Uh, and ours was one that continued to be compensated despite the changes in the past.
Okay, is that, is that per meeting, or per?
It is per meeting, um, and I, I'm, I'm happy to say that we're, we're pretty much tracking to what we had budgeted.
Okay.
Uh, if not, we're below, and, you know, our, our chairman, Mr. Boz, has indicated, look, if, if we're only going to meet just to sign papers and not hear any, any matters, then, um, perhaps it won't happen. And, and I'm, we're grateful to those people that have judgments that are to be signed, uh, in the, by the commission, uh, to have things continued, because, you know, there'll be settlements between parties, and if we know we're not going to have a hearing, we won't call a meeting for, say, fifteen minutes.
No, no, and I understand that, and you'll see my line of questioning here in, in, in a second, but how much are the commissioners compensated per meeting? Is there, is there a cap on, on the month, or?
There's no cap, but the, the number's fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars per meeting?
Correct.
Okay. I thought it was seventy-five, but it's fifty?
Oh, we're at fifty. If you want to make it seventy-five, we're, uh, seven people.
Okay, and so it's fifty, and how many meetings roughly do you have per month?
Um, I would say about six.
Six meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six, it varies between four, six, and could be eight. If we, we have a pretty busy calendar, we always like to see, um, settlements when they're, when they occur, and leads to a dismissal. But we're, we're pretty much on point, if not a little below budget, in terms of what we projected. And, um, again, our, our, my duty is to make sure that we set up as many hearings as we can, and use the time efficiently.
No, a, and again, that's, that's not my, I don't want to go down that way, I mean, obviously, I think the boards of commissions, people who have to turn in their financial statements and things like, like that, and, and be subjected to things like this at this point, should be compensated for those times. But I think there should be parity in, in our boards as well, and boards and commissions, people who serve. And the reason why I'm saying this, uh, Mr. Chairman, because, uh, when we look at, uh, parity in, in the boards, we definitely have boards, uh, that are not compensated, and especially, I've got boards, say, for example, Gura and the, and the airport board, who are not, are not compensated, basically, in that. But more than that, we have commission, we have the, we have the CCU that get paid a thousand dollars a month, Mr. Chairman, and is allowed by this house, this legislature. And so, in, in, in my line of questioning, we should bring parity. When we're looking at areas to cut, I think, I think this body is due time that we, we look at areas to cut, and, and we, we ought, uh, maybe, uh, members of this, this, uh, this body, uh, will help me in, maybe in, in a, in a, in an amendment. So they bring parity in regards to the CCU. They're get one thousand dollars per commissioner, per month. Now, you tell me. You tell me. I mean, they're elected official, but I, I tell you what, they serve just like, uh, just like you guys, and, and, and they're not necessarily up here in, in the scrutiny, and in scrutiny by, by this house, by this body. And I think it's about time, we're looking at areas to cut, that this is a, this, uh, an area that should be cut, and most especially in the CCU, what they do is, you know, on, whenever they meet, is to, to raise our rates. And so, that's due, uh, Ms. Chairman. Clearinghouse, CCU. We're getting close. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhon. We are in Civil Service Commission, there are sen, uh, senior senator and pinko.
Oh, throughout the line of questioning, I, I didn't hear, Mr. Chairman, how much is their present budget, and, uh, as compared to, to what they have right now?
I'm, I'm estimating it to be, um, probably about, it's, it's actually about, I think it's about five hundred thousand, um, just because of the transfers, and, um, and that's not including what would be the, uh, the lease amount?
Yeah, well, um, the, the, the reason why I'm sort of this, um, asking you this question is because normally you would have the numbers in front of you. Uh, you have known that we'll be asking you this question, and, you know, the other thing that we are asking is for, you know, how much have you actually drawn down, or, you know, cash received by your department regarding the, uh, your, your budget?
Aye, 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 sorry, that's okay. That's not a phone. Um, sorry about that. Um, I, I think, you know, I might have gotten some numbers, and the drawdown is, is just to, to accommodate the personnel, uh, costs that we've received to date. Senators, is my, is my understanding that, you know, they will do our best to accommodate the, um, you know, our personnel throughout the rest of the year? That's why I indicated earlier that we expect, uh, that, that we will get the support of the administration, um, considering the, the increase in the personnel, just because, you know, we, we had started with only, only three employees after that jurisdiction change. So, I'm, I'm, um, as, in far, as far as the numbers are concerned, if our numbers are, or the drawdown's a little higher, it might reflect the, uh, the added personnel. And, and we're, we're expecting that, you know, again, the funds will come to, to meet the, the requirements later on, through use of the lapsed funds and that, that ability, because I know we were grouped in with other agencies, uh, to be the, kind of the residual group that receives funding.
Vern, you still haven't answered my question.
I'm sorry.
I, I want a solid number.
Okay, well, I, I can, I can tell you that it's, I'm guessing it's, uh, about five hundred, maybe five fifteen for the complete, uh, personnel costs, and then, we have a very, no, I don't even think it's that much, I'm sorry. You know what, Senator, I, I apologize. Let me, let me look at this thing and see if I can get you a more, a better number. It's probably under the five, and, okay, I think it, it will, will be the numbers, it's four, six, seven, six, seven, one, and, um, that would be the, the kind of the bare minimum on the, on the personnel. That would be, I guess, my estimate. And then, of course, the residual needs will be for our operation costs, which are, have been minimized, and we continue to look at any ways to save, and I could tell you, we, we have very, very, uh, few options in that area, but we're still trying, um, and then whatever the lease, lease amounts would be.
So, with this residual, uh, amount added to the four sixty-seven, which is all personnel, uh, it would go up to about five hundred and fifteen thousand? Is that what you're saying?
No, actually, um, maybe all told, I, I'm thinking more of five seventy, ultimately.
Five seventy?
I, I think that's correct. And that would allow for, again, our, what I deem minimal operations, uh, and, and lease. But what are, what we expect is, is for the, uh, the administration to, to see clear that we meet our obligations, and, uh, as we have relied on in the past years, for infusions based on transfer authority, and we expect, you know, to always have a, a, a clear line of communications to make sure that, that that's gonna, that's going to occur. And, and, you know, to date, that's, that's been the case, and we expect that to be for, for the rest of the year. Now, of course, I know we're here for a reason, and we're doing our part, there are a few options that we do have, one subscription, um, to some legal service, uh, research, uh, agency, otherwise, uh, we've tried to pare down any operation costs as we could.
Yeah, well, you know, one, one of the things that I'm sort of, uh, looking at right now, in terms of your agencies, the, maybe, there's really no one in your organization that is, that's actually keeping track of the, uh, the budget of your, uh, agency. And it looks like you are getting help from other, you know, from the administration, because you're always mentioning the, the administration, this administration, that, and support of the administration. But, uh, in order for you to, you know, for your agency to be effective, that you definitely need to sort of have a head count, in terms of what you got, and how much you, you should be operating with, and whether, you know, and, and what we've been finding, Vern, is that a lot of departments and agencies are getting less than what they were budgeted for. And so I assume that you're getting also the same, you know, you're having the same problem too, right? But the, the, the lack of information from you right now, sort of, uh, you know, makes it harder in terms of comparison, because you do definitely have a lot of, a lot of expenses involved.
Yeah. If I could respond, Senator, I just think we're probably not in the boat of getting less, but probably getting more. And, and we ask this body to understand that, you know, we, we certainly needed additional employees, especially at the initial, uh, point of that jurisdiction change, and we've received that. And, and to that extent, we're grateful, because we, we were able to make those additions. And, and, and I'm just saying, as far as all the money that's supposed to, to be there, we're anticipating, uh, working with DOA, BBMR, to, to make sure that, that it will be covered. But my impression is that we're, we're being, we're being helped along at this point, um, and of course, it'll all get straightened out in oh-seven, oh-eight, the oh-eight budget, but, um, we're, that's the, the support I'm referring to. And, and we're not getting less than what we originally might have been budgeted, but now we're getting a little bit more, we're hoping to solidify that, so we can continue with our base.
The, the administration presented earlier, uh, that all the departments and agencies right now are actually bearing that two and a half percent, um, reduction, as far as their present budget is concerned. So my question is, the four hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine, is this, is that a reflection of, uh, that two and a half percent decrease?
I, I think that is a reflection of a two and a half percent, but the, the fact is, is that, um, you know, we, we may be, uh, requiring additional funds than that, and, and we expect that to occur with whatever transfer authority is made available, and infusions that are, are then, um, anticipated, to make sure that our personnel are covered.
Okay, well, uh, so how many, how many personnels do you have right now, including yourself?
I have a total of six, in addition to me.
Six in addition to you?
Yes, sir.
You have the legal counsel, right?
Including the legal counsel.
Okay.
Um, and there's the, the board secretary, who works with the board, of course, and the legal counsel, and then, um, my personnel management administrator, and one analyst, and the clerk typist, and then, of course, the personnel secretary that we're, we were just discussing. So there's a total of seven, in, including the director, executive director, that's me.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Senior Senator and Pinko. Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. So presently, you have, uh, seven personnel under the Civil Service Commission?
That is correct.
And, uh, how many went to DOA?
That number is seven. Right, first, it was originally nine, and then we were allowed to have, um, the first transfer to have two back, leaving seven there, and, and then recently, the addition would make my seventh person, um, but seven ultimately had transferred to DOA. Seven of twelve.
And when that seven went to, uh, DOA, um, in your opinion, because this also deals with the, how are we gonna bridge the entire, uh, Governor of Guam in the next six months, uh, what did that do to the Civil Service Commission?
Well, well, the original transfer left me only with three employees, and, um, you know, as it's still an agency to be run, hence the need for what were the two transfers, or that, the two people that ultimately remained with the Civil Service Commission. Um, I mean, it was difficult, difficult at first, yes, we know jurisdiction changed, but the need to continue with adverse action appeals and grievance appeals, as well as administer the Mini Hatch Act and Ethics in Public Contracting, you know, that, that has always, that's, that's been a struggle. And, and that's why, you know, additional staffing is always a welcome, uh, situation for us.
And what does this, um, net effect, um, cause the, uh, classified employees?
Well, we know for sure that there, there has not been, um, a venue to have administratively reviewed personnel actions for the government, line agencies, autonomous agencies alike. That, that, that authority, that what they call null and void authority, is gone.
Personnel actions, including, um, pay?
Could be pay, right? Because that's, that's an action, that's part of it. That's right. And, um, you know, we'll get plenty of phone calls, only to, to normally end in, you know, that's no longer the jurisdiction of the commission, um, check with your agency, uh, or if it's a question specifically about compensation, we know the DOA handles that at this time. But if there's something wrong or errant about a, a personnel action, we just tell employees, look, we know the commission is not engaged in those anymore, your venue may have to be with the courts.
But then it also take away the, uh, check and balance that Civil Service provides to, uh, this process, to make sure that the director's not, um, you know, latterly setting these salaries?
Um, absolutely, the check and balance was taken away. Because even if there are, if the laws might indicate that they're supposed to be in conformance with this or that, who, who's the enforcer? Who, who is going to check? And it, it doesn't make for that.
Are you currently involved in the, um, the process that the, uh, administration has undertaken with regard to the, uh, furlough notices?
I'm not involved in the administration of that, uh, because that, you know, at the commission, we're going to ultimately receive appeals, potentially. So if someone has a question about the rules, uh, what they are, what they mean, yes, we're, I'm available for that, and I've, I've had some questions.
Have you seen, uh, sorry, have you seen any of the letters that went out?
Yes, yes.
Does that letter, uh, satisfy the thirty-day notice requirement?
Well, I know that I, I'm as well a director, and I, I have to administer, um, letters as well, if there's going to be that, and we're, if we're going to be treated the same way. But, as I understand it, the general notice is, uh, is primarily informational, to talk about the process in the event it's utilized, and, uh, to have people consider volunteering, um, if they, if they want to do that, because that's part of the, the rules, you have to ask for volunteers.
But, uh, classified employees, um, by law, must have thirty days' notice whether or not these furlough procedures are going to happen, right?
There is a thirty-day notice in the, in the rules, a requirement, and it was changed by a law of several years ago. Previously, I don't know, it was ninety, I believe. But yes, there's a thirty-day notice, I do not believe the, at least the letters that I provided, that I've seen, are the thirty-day notice rules. These are more informational, and that the thirty-day notice will occur sometime subsequent.
And then when they do another notice, then they would have to provide that employee, those employees thirty days?
That's correct.
So this letter does not, in your opinion, does not trigger the thirty-day, uh, notice requirement?
Yes, that's, that's my impression at this time, it's not the thirty-day notice, it's more the, it's, they're calling, it's a general notice to provide information about the process, to ask people to consider volunteering, um, because volunteering, um, is something that needs to be assessed before you engage in involuntary furloughs.
I think what you said, um, Vern, is very important for the Government of Guam employees who follow the session and their families, because their anxiety level is, um, at all-time high, because, uh, some of them interpret this letter to be the, uh, to fulfill the thirty-day, uh, notice requirement. So I want, thank you for, um, clarifying that.
Thank you for the question, and I know, I received a call just last Friday from someone, and, uh, and I explained it the same way, because, I mean, that's my impression. And, um, again, it's always hoped that furloughs and layoffs are something of last resort. And whatever, the work that you're doing here today, I encourage you to, you know, to do it as, of course, you will do it as well as you can, but, you know, anything to avert furloughs and layoffs, um, is always hoped for, wished for. The idea that they're the last component, uh, of, of any kind of an action, is, is, it flows naturally. You're supposed to look for cutting costs, and then you look for volun, if you know that cost-cutting is not going to be adequate, then you ask people to consider for volunteering. If that's not adequate, then you engage in the furloughs.
And I, uh, I understand that, um, Senator Guthers, uh, will proffer an amendment to bring the Civil Service, um, Commission back intact, and I would support that.
I, I'm, I'm grateful to hear that, again.
We've always tried on this side of the aisle to restore what was done, uh, and we're going to try again, and we have an opportunity here to do that, uh, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you, uh, Acting Lieutenant Governor Cabo, for giving I want to thank you, Acting Lieutenant Governor Cabo, for giving me this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. Senator Wompette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to-
By the way, I'm still waiting for my legislative seal. Or no, no, the state seal. I haven't gotten that yet, so I've asked for the chief of staff to get me that seal. Senator Wompette.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to do a follow-up on the previous speaker's line of questioning. When the civil service was whole, one of the things that you would do would be the enforcement then of personnel actions. Now that portion has been transferred, to your knowledge, do you know if there's been any enforcement, any auditing going on?
Only to the extent that it deals with what the beginnings of compensation and classification, Senator. As I indicated, the law did not transfer null and void. That just disappeared. Because not even Department of Administration can go and request information of an agency and indicate that it's, something's been done incorrectly, and require them to change it. That's not a possibility anymore. That just went away. And as a result, there are actions out there that may go unchecked. So again, the fact is, that did not transfer. So there is no null and void authority that's being either utilized or being used to broach the issue of addressing a wrong action, incorrect personnel action. At this point, no one gets to do it, except, I suppose, an employee that wants to take an administrator to court, which we think, of course, you want to avoid. You want to deal with things administratively. And just this idea of potentially restoring particularly that item, you know, I've told our chairman, Senator, that if there is an issue that agencies have, in terms of dealing with the commission, the commission staff, that's why we have oversight hearings, I suppose, or you will have oversight hearings, and we're an open book in that regard. Because we want to get through all and any issues. So we certainly welcome the idea of contemplating it, and I would dare say, it was in a budget hearing that this jurisdiction got taken away. It's in a budget hearing that perhaps some of it can, or all of it can be restored. And I invite you to pose questions to me, here now or later, to answer, because we really want to be open. We think it's efficient, and it's appropriate. And an independent body of seven commissioners, that's really answerable to public hearings and the public, is ready to work. And I speak for the commission on that regard. I just don't, I didn't quite understand what happened, or why it happened, a year and a half ago. We are ready to work with anybody, and we are now. But clearly, you want an independent body to help enforce the merit system. You want a check. You want the balance. And this might, it's not numbers, but it's a concept. And thank you for bringing it up, Senators. I mean, we're grateful, and we're here to answer any other questions in that regard.
Can you just, I didn't catch some of the discussions earlier, but I'm trying to get some figures here correct. In your total appropriation for '07 was $467,671. Am I correct?
I believe so, yes.
And then it was indicated that 68% at least has been, the percentage of the appropriation has been given to your commission. In the governor's bill, on page 16, in parentheses, for Civil Service Commission, there's a dollar amount of, well, a reduction down to $455,979, a difference then of $11,692. However, I heard the senior senator asking what the actual then now budget would be of Civil Service Commission, because apparently it has increased. And all I was able to catch was a $570,000. So is, so I'm trying to make sense of this, and I want to hear from you what is happening here, because I thought there was a reduction of $11,692. However, there seemed to be an increase then from what the original budget was of $467,000 to now $570?
I might have misspoke. I guess if this represents the personnel number, then, you know, that's, I imagine that's what it is. I'm adding in the potential for the lease costs, which, you know, we had a lease expire. But as far as personnel is concerned, if this is what's being reflected, you know, again, I'm told that the personnel that we have, by way of originally, since the jurisdiction change, and then any additions, you know, will be ultimately funded by use of lapses and transfer authority. So we are prepared to work with the administration on that. We believe that, you know, ultimately, our positions will be supported, and we're grateful for that. Because we believed, and we believe we can justify certainly any increases that we believe we needed. And to that extent, you know, we're ready to work with what the administration has planned with respect to our personnel budget.
So you're saying, then, that your budget didn't go up to $570?
Yeah, I want to take that back. If this is the reflected personnel costs, and forgive me, Senator Minko, if I misspoke as well, then that's what's represented. And we're, again, we're prepared, we are certainly prepared to work with what's provided. We have relied in the past on the ability for some transferring and some infusion to occur at the end of, you know, the budgetary cycle historically, and we hope that that will help us, again, through the rest of this fiscal year.
So then, you do know, then, that there would be a short of, I mean, in the amount of $11,692?
We're aware that that's what they've placed, numbers-wise, there. We are wishful that ultimately, whatever monies might be available, will, again, assist the commission in meeting its personnel needs, for sure. But we're trying to do our part on operations costs. We have very, very few. We submit minimal operation costs to begin with. There's a subscription, as I indicated, that we know we can come back on. We're meeting a little under what we might have budgeted for, so we might have some savings there as well, with the remainder of the fiscal year. So operations-wise, while not stopping, of course, we'll receive any and all appeals and process whatever complaints we have for the other two remaining jurisdictional matters for the commission, you know, we're going to do our best to cut our costs, again, operationally. But we expect to be supported personnel-wise, through the administration, BBMR, DOA, and through the use of the lapse funds again, and infusion and transfer authority.
So you budgeted for how many positions total? You said you have seven, but total, in your budget, how many positions do you have, where you, did you request for last year, this budget year?
I think we might have done for six last year.
But you have seven now?
Now, that's the recent transfer that we acquired about a month ago.
Okay. That doesn't make sense, because you said you had, that position was vacant, and then you got the body-
Yeah, oh, not a vacancy. This is, we didn't actually budget that seventh position historically.
Okay. So you have received then now body position, and hopefully the salary will come with it, because there's just no way you'd be able to do it with a shortfall of $11,000.
That, I can understand you certainly saying that. And again, in my estimation, what occurs for our agency historically, for the last several years, is that if, you know, if there would be a shortfall, that they would help cover it with infusions, just based on the transfer authority that this body provides, the governor. And we hope that that process will continue to work for the commission.
Okay. Mr. De La Rosa, maybe can just give us an idea here. When we look at the governor's bill, when we see an agency's name, and then in parentheses, the general fund, the dollar amount that's there, is going to be the amount that the reduction, that's the reduced amount compared to what's originally in '07? Can, and I'm not going to jump the gun here, but what I'm trying to also understand is that if we are to add all these amounts, that it would equal to, or be less than, the overall executive budget?
I'm sorry, Senator, I don't understand the question. The appropriation levels in the governor's initial proposed budget, as presented, now is equal to the anticipated revenues that were also part of the package.
Oh, so it's not then reflective of what's for each department and agency? Because, you know, I mean, Mr. Chairman, please, just for a sec, I don't mean to ask questions beyond the-
I'm sorry, Senator, can you just speak a little bit louder into the microphone?
I'm trying to hold one and write with the other.
Thank you.
The original request was $24 million, and now it's $66 million. And I'm trying to add all these departments and agents to see whether that dollar amount is reflected in each individual budget for the departments and agencies. It's a general question.
Yes. The, what we did was, what's reflected in the appropriation levels are the true operating costs, as opposed to the initial appropriation level. That was, that's currently in the budget.
Okay. So true operating cost versus operational budget?
Versus what was initially the appropriation level.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, good. Okay, that's it, thank you. Oh, and then the other question. I know, I know that last Thursday, there was a request, basically, for the executive branch to seriously look within the departments and agencies for positions, especially, you know, positions that are needed in departments, like, for example, rev and tax, possibly, maybe for the AG's office. But I hope that you don't take that too hard to mean that the executive branch, the governor's office, will continue to hire and then place them into those positions, but rather to find within departments and agencies where there may be duplications, or where, you know, they can definitely do without a position, and instead assist other departments and agencies, that body position and salaries instead be transferred.
Yes, ma'am, and that is actually reflected in the governor's executive order of the detailed authority that was given to BBMR. So that's actively happening right now.
Okay. I have one more, last question for civil service. I heard you say that you were going to negotiate your rent. Is that as a result of the downsizing of the commission?
Actually, the original lease that we engaged in several years ago was expiring, so we had to, we had to get a new lease to begin with. And certainly, considering the size of the commission had decreased, we need to reflect some decrease, anyway, on the square footage requirements.
And when would you need to do that?
Well, actually, we're kind of in the process at this time. I mean, there was, there was one that was recently, a bid that was recently issued, and the process is at the final stages already. So, you know, how it all works into this budget mix, and how, you know, again, it's supported, I mean, we'll see. But thank you for the question.
Well, yeah, that's, I was just going to suggest that maybe you might want to kind of hold off until you see what the result is before the end of this particular session on this bill.
Understood, Senator. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Wompette. Senator Lujan, I know we're pressed for time, but you had to, you wanted to follow up on previous speakers' question?
On, yes, on previous speakers.
Okay, please, continue, Senator Lujan.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Vern, just real quick, in regards to the, because I'm getting inundated with calls from different agencies as well, line agencies regarding the furlough letters. I've got a sample letter here, basically. Let me ask you this, because, you know, let me read kind of what it says before the employee signatures. I understand that I may request for management's approval if I need to terminate my above requests before the expiration date. I may. Okay? And I am submitting this request to reduce my work hours voluntarily, without coercion, intimidation, or pressure from anyone, seduce mase for your consideration. Okay. That being said, I'm hearing otherwise, that there are coercions being done. Hey, just sign it, man, because, you know, that you received it. But just sign it. And so I'm getting a bunch of calls from employees of agencies who have signed it based on those conditions. Regardless of those conditions, okay, my question is, does the employee, kind of like in a contract of a buyer's remorse, do they have at least like 72 hours to reconsider their contract, or those letters, signatures? Or is this a different situation, once you sign, sorry, you sign your life away? Is there, is there an out clause? Is they, can they reconsider their signature? For whatever reason? They may have no reason at all, but they just didn't want to sign it. Can they reconsider? Kind of like a contract that I may get into buying a car, and I've got 72 hours to have a buyer's remorse on that?
Right. You're probably reading something off like the TGIT, or Quality Time Selection, an employee might make in terms of volunteering to shorten their hours.
Sure, sure.
And, you know, as long as the director's not detrimentally relying on it, I'm sure that, you know, it can probably be rescinded, just like most things. But yeah, I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards. The idea of pressuring, it's supposed to be voluntary, voluntary reduction in hours, that's the opportunity that's made available.
Sure, sure.
And then, if you know a furlough's going to happen, that's when you're going to really expect people to engage in that. Because they can, they can end up saving on benefits and not losing any.
No, no, and I understand that. And my concern is, again, I mean, whether the contract is, or whether this is valid or not, the signature's valid or not, that's a point to contend with. But my line of question is, supposedly, some employees that have signed on Thursday, they got this in conjunction with their checks. Now, is there an out clause? Can they rescind that within a 72-hour period? You know, I think they would feel more comfortable if they were to do that, because they've already kind of put that, and they're under the impression that, oh my gosh, I'm signing my, yeah, I'm locked in, I'm signing off my death certificate, pretty much. But I guess to make them feel better that you can rescind it, what is the time of rescension for a letter such as that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the timeline on that. But if there is one, you know, I'd want to review it a little bit more thoroughly before I actually answer that question. But I do expect, again, if a director's not going to rely on it just yet, because there's not the indication provided-
Sure, sure.
-I'm pretty sure that they can easily say, hey, excuse me, I signed this prematurely or in reconsideration, I'd like to not employ this option.
Sure. I'm not necessarily, again, not necessarily entertaining the coercion or the intimidation of that, it's just the fact that if there a timeline, that they can rescind such signature on that.
Yeah. I don't think there was, there is a timeline on that, and so this is probably the opportunity then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Lujan. Let's take a minute recess to move to the other departments, and that dispenses with Civil Service Commission. One minute recess.
The committee, the whole is back in order. We are now in E, on page 16, Bureau of Statistics and Plans. Bureau of Statistics and Plans. No comments, no questions. Senator Senorio. Oh, okay. Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to our guests today from the Bureau of Statistics and Plans.
Good morning.
First point is, I understand, Mr. La Marina, that you've produced your new publication on data throughout the various aspects of life on Guam. I don't know what you titled it, was it Social Indicators, or?
Well, that was the School Year Book.
Yes, yeah. And the new senators have not received a copy of it.
We will, we can have CDs delivered to each of you.
Yeah, I think it's a very valuable publication, and certainly it's something that we should see to assist us in our policy activities.
Okay, we'll have that delivered today.
Thank you very much. Now, with reference to your agency, in the midst of some of the challenges facing the government of Guam, what kind of data are you collecting and disseminating that would be helpful to policymakers, and to the governor, of course, department agencies, and to members of the legislature in looking at trends that could impact revenues of the government of Guam?
Presently, we conduct the Consumer Price Index. We have staff that go out, and we have presently 200 outlets that our staff goes out to get pricing. And that will help in the development of the GDP. We also have the import- We also have the import, import-export surveys where we work with the various companies and get information on goods that are imported and exported. We also do statistics on the fisheries as well. You know, insofar as the GDP, our goal for this year, and we just recently, after two years of, of having the position announced, we, we just filled the position about a month ago for the chief economist for the bureau, and I have given our chief economist by August of next year that he will have, on an annual basis, the GDP for, for the use of not only our lawmakers, but also investors to the island as well. So, we are working right now, the OIA, Office of Insular Affairs of the Department of Interior, recently awarded the contract to the Department of Interior. We have already met with University of Michigan representatives, and they will be working with us to develop a matrix that is going to be specific to the island economies and not as complex as, for example, the NEPA matrix. So, we'll be working with them, they will be teaching our staff and the other agencies who are charged with collecting data so that we can, on an annual basis, now have a GDP and a CPI for, for the island.
Okay, now, I note you mentioned, you mentioned the University of Michigan, which is a very fine institution, but where does University of Guam come in with their economists?
We work, actually, we work very closely with the University of Guam. As a matter of fact, Dr. Enriquez, Anita Enriquez, we're working very closely, she has a grant, and we will be using her students as a, a major component in, in the data collection process. We're also working very closely with Peter Barsinas as well in developing our matrices and, and, and other data that we collect as well. And we work very closely with the Department of Labor.
Very good. How about on population statistics? Of course, we rely on the census, but that happens every 10 years.
Right.
I'm kind of concerned about, you know, the planned move of the military to Guam. Of course, we're anticipating a significant increase in the military population and dependence of the military, but we're also going to see a big increase in migration to Guam from other countries and from the Western Pacific. And that, of course, presents other challenges to us, such as adequate education facilities, health facilities, social facilities, et cetera, et cetera. How is your agency tracking population change?
We, we use a formula that's provided by the Census Bureau. As a matter of fact, the Census Bureau reps were just here a couple of weeks ago, and we are now in preparation for the 2010 census, and we have brought all those issues up with them insofar as the military buildup, that the time the census is taken in 2010, obviously those numbers could be skewed, because by 2010, when the census is being conducted, most of the individuals related to the military buildup will primarily be the construction workforce, and then the military workforce, or the military, won't be moving until after the cer, the census is conducted. So, we have talked to them about a mid-decade census. Obviously, they have told us that it can be done, but they will not fund it, so we, they have asked us to work with our Washington delegate to put in appropriation in to conduct a mid-decade census, because by the time we conduct one in 2015, things would have settled down. Most of the construction workers would be, would have departed, and then the military personnel and their families would have already been moved to Guam at that time. So, we're working very closely with the Census Bureau on that as well.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that, because my, my sense tells me that we're going to see a massive influx of folks coming here legally and illegally, and we need to be able to have the numbers to be able to make a strong case for reimbursements, enhancing our compact impact monies, and other federal monies for the island, and of course, we're going to depend a lot on your agency to get that data for us.
As a matter of fact, Senator, we just concluded the 2006 Compact Impact Study, and we can send that to you as well.
Yes, and what were some of the major findings, real quick?
Uh, I think total impact, if I can recall, is about $32 million to the government of Guam. The major agency that bore the burden of that impact was, was GPSS, and I think they were about over 20 million of that 32 million dollars.
And that's just for one year?
Right.
My goodness, we, we need that information.
I know, we'll, we'll send that to you as well, we'll send that.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Guthers, oh, Senator Tenorio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Tony, I also want to applaud you on the work that you've done over the last few years.
Thank you, Senator.
You're, you're always keeping my office informed, and I appreciate that, and you've got some really talented staff that work with you. Beyond that, the budgetary cuts that we're always looking at here are sustainable by your, your office with some clear impact. What impact would that be?
Well, well, based on the proposed cuts for Bill 74, we recently have two vacancies, and so those, actually, those two vacancies not being filled will actually make us fiscally all right at this point in time for the remainder of the year.
So that would be all you need to do, is not fill those vacancies?
Fill those two vacancies, yes.
Okay, some members have indicated that just not filling vacancies is not adequate insofar as not paying the current payroll that we need to cut further. If there is any additional cuts required, would you be able to sustain those cuts?
You know, it'd be difficult at this time, we, we've, we've put, presently, the bureau secures about $11 million worth of federal grants, and we've put, I believe, 18 of our staff, or 17, 17 of our staff on, on federally funded positions, and then 21 positions are, 20 positions are locally funded. So, we've, we've funded as many positions as we can through our federal grants.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Tony, I'd also like to congratulate you on the work you're doing out there and your staff as well.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, your, your statistics was very helpful for us putting together Resolution 121, the 28th Guam Legislature, in identifying $2.4 billion, and a resolution that this body had passed, a request in regards to the military move, a total of $2.4 billion. And without the statistics that we had gathered from information from your agency, we wouldn't have been able to put those numbers together in an expeditious manner. You know, let me just say that the work you do is, is very valuable over there in regards to getting information to be able to work with revenue tax, Department of Labor, and all that, because if you, if you've been listening in the past couple months, we're, I'm sorry, past few weeks, in regards to the methodology in which data is collected to put revenue projections and things like that, and, you know, if we're just grabbing numbers from the air, you know, and you input, you know, garbage in, it's garbage out, but if we have no, if we have no method in which we're tracking, what numbers are we tracking? What are we working with? You know, are we having a trend? What is the trend? What are we tracking? Are we tracking business licenses? Are we tracking tourists? How much of this tourist paying and things like that? And that's an indication, you know, we have to have a, a place to start with in what methodology. And I think the work that you do is, is very, is very valuable, and I hope that they continuously work with you in regards to a methodology in which it's used for tracking our revenue stream, because, again, the work that you do is very valuable, and how long will we have, till we have a GDP?
Well, you know, the, the contract with the University of Michigan begins August of this year, so we're giving ourselves a year from August of this year, so August 2008, we want to have a GDP.
Yeah, because, again, as previously said, extremely valuable information that we're going to need in, in anticipated, anticipated growth. We know, again, that as our oversight chair, we, we're looking at an increase in population, at least temporarily, for, for the buildup, but then after that, we're also going to see a population increase based on the support network that's going to be had or needed to, to support the, the, the extra influx of, of migration coming here, in here to the island. But again, you know, as Senator Tenorio had, had asked, are you able to live again with, with the cuts that you're going to be taking? Because you're, you are valuable for that source of information, and I hate to, again, come, again, to have folks come before this body, and again, the methodology is just grabbing out from, from, from thin air.
Well, Senator, as I, I stated to Senator Tenorio, there are two recent vacancies, so the money we save through those vacancies will get us through the year as, as presented in Bill 74, and we are constantly always looking for additional grants to fund new programs and projects and personnel within the bureau. When we begin working with the University of Michigan come August, they have told us that they will provide funding, not necessarily for employ, to hire staff, but to cover, for example, equipment and supplies that we'll need in conducting the GDP and the CPI on a regular basis. So, we'll be working very closely with them, and hopefully that will alleviate also some of our operational expenses as well.
Sure, okay, I guess my question is, then, that in, in the anticipated deductions that you're taking, basically, into your budget, would it, would it hinder, again, your, your, your progress in your data collection, again, and so it'd be a part of a, a methodology in which a, a, a very educated guess can be made as opposed to a wild guess, as I, as I...
On the statistical side, there is one vacant, vacancy on the statistical side, but we'll, we'll feel that with, with our chief economist now in place, he's reevaluating all the schedules and performances of each of the employees there, and so he's going to bring up a new schedule to pick up the slack of that, that one employee.
So you have a chief economist on, in place right now?
Right, right.
That's good.
When we're working, actually, we're working very closely with the vice speaker's office as well, annotating that data, because we know he needs that data in forecasting.
No, absolutely, and again, extremely valuable information that we're going to need, and, and for companies, actually, I mean, they, they come to us, I mean, almost on a daily basis, we're entertaining companies that wanting to come out here, but they want to look at GDP, they, you know, how are we tracking, the methodology in which you, you come up with your forecasting for, for, for revenues and things like that, so very, very valuable information that you guys, that your agency collects, and very valuable in our anticipated growth. But with that, thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much, Senator Luhon.
Senator Pangolinan? Thank you very much. Tony, let's not, I think the vacancies, those were filled positions during the first part of the fiscal year?
Right, right.
Okay, what were those positions paying?
Uh, the statistician was paying with benefits, 34, 494, and then the private secretary, 36, 876, with benefits.
And when, when did they become vacant?
Uh, the statistician became vacant, I think, March 30, and the private secretary became vacant last month.
Okay, that, you're, the, the budget cut, then, Tony, that your, your department's facing is about $50,000.
Well, our, our, the budget that we're operating on is 1,098,466, so the cut to 1,071 would be a 27,000 cut, so it's actually, we added the numbers up, it would actually put us at pretty much bounds.
Okay, I, I guess I was looking at the governor's proposed, because in the last budget, there's no allocation in the budget bill to what your department was operating at, what your budget ceiling level was, and the presentation to the governor, by the governor's bill that he sent down, which was originally proposed, was a budget ceiling of 1,121,906, and that was in his proposed budget submittal. The budget that was passed had no budget ceiling at all, so in effect, that was reduced, the 1,121 allocation in the original budget was then further reduced to 1,098.
1,1098.
1, okay, all right, so that's where I, I looked at that. So basically, you have, um, then these positions that, that are not, so this is a very different scenario than not funding or eliminating vacancies that were never filled. You actually had the cash outlay on this during the first part of the fiscal year, so that's a huge difference than just cutting the vacancies that were funded but never filled. There is no reduction in cost there, there is no, uh, reduction in the cash outlay required for those positions. Now, you also mentioned that you had transferred some positions into federally funded positions?
Well, that was, that was done prior.
Prior to the beginning of the fiscal year?
Right, and so...
So your 1,098 is reflective of those positions already not being generally, general, funded from the general fund?
Right.
Okay.
These are, so the, the budget that we presented here, no additional employees were put on, on federal programs.
From the, from the 1,098?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, the, the, the operations of the, of the department, then, in this manner, no other, no other contractual obligations at all? So your 1,098 is basically all salaries?
Salaries and, and office supplies, equipment.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Ms. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. And if that, no other comments or questions on Bureau Stats and Plans, I'd like to thank Senator Lamarena and your staff.
Thank you, Senator.
We're going to take a minute recess to get in the next department. Okay, the committee, the whole is back in order. We are now in F, page 16, Department of Military Affairs, Department of Military Affairs. And I'm looking at to the body, if there's no comments, no questions, then we have deliberated, and we've dispensed with Department of Military Affairs. I want to, I want to just tell you folks to belated Happy Easter.
This is outstanding, thank you, Senator.
We're going to take a, a recess for lunch to the body, 1:30? 1:30, recess till 1:30. Okay, the committee, the whole is back in order. We are now in, again, Section 14 on page 16, G, Department of Public Works. I would like to introduce the Director, Mr. Larry Pares. Mr. Pares, good, good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Senator.
And maybe before we start, if you can introduce these lovely ladies here?
Yes, to my right, we have our controller, the Department of Public Works Controller, that's Arlene Pierce. To, to her right is our Acting Chief Engineer, Josephine Torres, and then to Josephine's right is our Solid Waste Program Manager, Program Administrator, acting at least, Cynthia Jackson, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and now we are in Department of Public Works, I have Senior Senator Tony Apinko.
Okay, first of all, regarding the solid waste, do we have any picked up in the southern area, like Santarita Agua this week?
It was behind on Friday, there was, we had a little problem with it, but right now, the Agua Transfer Station is being opened up from 2:00, 2:30 till 5:00 for the residents to come in and dispose of their waste.
Are the people going to be charged for drop, you know, going to the transfer station?
Well, at this point, they don't, this was just a very impromptu type of solution to try and help what's going on right now with the collection route, and so they'll be charged, but they'll have a credit memo against, on their account, so when they come and pay their bill, they'll be credited for it. They got to keep their receipts.
How do you do that, again? Wouldn't that be rather difficult, you know, to, to go to Public Works and get the credit memo, you know, and subtract the amount, because many of them would just use either their credit card or send in their, their payment?
I have good faith in their sys, in the system that we're currently using, and it's been, it's been purged of a lot of bad information, and so we've been doing credit memos on a consistent basis recently. We've looked, we've gone back to that and, and have addressed problems that have arisen because of things like this, and so it's, it's working, it's a good system to use, it's what we have to avail of ourselves using the AS400.
But in the past, they, they normally sort of waived the, the tipping fees, you know, for, when, when, they're supposed to come on Friday, and they didn't come on Friday, they didn't come on Sunday or Saturday, and so that means that you have to skip one week, right? So the individual homeowners now that had paid the tipping fees would have to actually go to, you know, to the transfer station, which is an additional cost to what they normally pay.
It's a flat rate of $5. It's a flat rate of five dollars, and if that go on that, that flat rate, whatever they pay there, what they take their receipts, that receipt gets generated onto the AS four-hundred system, because that receipt comes to our office, gets posted, when a customer comes in to pay, the system will work itself through.
Okay, um, well, I, I know that was sort of a policy before, and I, I'll take your word for it as far as, you know, making it work, and I guess there's a lot of things in the system itself that needs to be sort of ironed out, and, like, for example, people, let's say in the subdivision that have not paid tipping fees, I think there's still some people that claim they have not paid tipping fees, so, how do you take care of that? You know, like, um, your people, how would your people that go, would go around the subdivision know that they have paid their tipping fees or not? Would they, do you have any marker that, are these people paid or not?
Yes, there is a system where they've been terminated, when there's a new account, they'll go out and mark the, at, the pavement where that address is situated, and that's where our crews who come by on, on the trash collection, and then when they see that mark, they'll know what appropriate action to take, whether to pick up that trash, if it's a new account, or not to pick up the trash because that account's been terminated, and then if there are problems in between, that's when customer service is activated and working with that resident.
Okay, so you're saying they, they do have a marker now on, on that house that are not, you know, is not paying the, the tipping fees, so, but how, you know, these people, they move, especially, you know, they, they work in the, in darkness, like early morning, four o'clock, they're already picking up the trash, and how do they have the time to look whether they have paid, you know, this, you know, this household paid tipping fees or not?
I don't disagree with you that our system is somewhat archaic, but it's, um, it's changing. Right now, we're work, I've got a listing of customer registrations, who, of people who have registered, I have a new route map system being created, and, and then we're taking our registered customer base and putting that onto this routing, um, mapping, and in a few weeks, you will see that you will have route assignment, when you will have a actual route book designed like an atlas, so the driver has the data, who is on our customer, what address to pick up. Now, we've also looked at moving towards something called a decal program, where there will be an actual physical identification around the customer's property to signify that they are a customer of the solid waste residential collection, and this is how we're gonna also broach into, um, the outsourcing of our residential collection as mandated by law.
But you don't, you don't give, like, for example, the drivers of, um, the trucks, you know, a copy of those people that have not paid, so that, you know, they'll be updated every week, and so...
There is a separate crew that handles that, and that's our termination new accounts crew, and that's the crew that goes out there, based on the information generated from customer service, when a customer cuts off his account, or because they haven't paid their bill, which is what we're coming towards, okay, at the end of this ninety-day period, if they're not, those accounts will be terminated. This crew goes out and physically marks the pavement with fluorescent paint, so, no matter what time in the morning, you should be able to see something. And then there's also historical data. Most of what's going on right now is the route drivers, they have this all in their head, again, it's historical knowledge. These drivers have been with our, um, our, with the government and on this type of work for some time, a lot of them know who's to pick up and who's not to pick up.
Senator, if I may also add, it's for these very reasons that, uh, the Department of Public Works is, is actually gonna be outsourcing its residential waste collections. Um, the current system they have is archaic, as was mentioned earlier, uh, there's certainly a wealth of room for improvement, and we are heading in that direction. We've actually, uh, the maps that, that are, Cynthia has mentioned earlier, that's actually being finalized, and that will be incorporated as an appendix to the actual RFP that's gonna go out. So, once we finalize that, uh, we expect, uh, within the next, uh, two to three months, to be releasing out an RFP for the complete, um, outsourcing of residential waste collections, at which time, uh, you know, the methodology determined by the private company will be the methodology for them to collect the revenues, uh, or allow us to collect the tipping fee for those who are being served versus those who are not paying and should not be served. So, yes, uh, I, I can understand your, your frustration, a lot of the discussion is very simplistic, uh, but that's the very reason why we're outsourcing it.
So, uh, okay, well, you know, you, when you look at GWAGPA, of course, they have a system where if you don't pay, they have a separate crew that will come out and disconnect your service, but in this case, uh, you know, the, the driver must be there to remember the route, and the crew out there also should more or less, um, be able to spot, you know, what has, uh, you know, which house has, you know, was not up to date as far as their payments concerned, but the fact is, isn't there, um, your policy is that whether they're there or not, they still have to pay, as long as they are in the system itself?
What?
Or do you have to actually be, be registered to, to?
That's correct. You, you have to be...
So, right now, if you're staying on the subdivision, like where I stayed, for example, um, and people put out their trash, so, you know, if, I, this is where I, I've been hearing some people saying, oh, I have not paid the tipping fees, but no, you know, I have not received any billing at all, and so, uh, of course, this is just in passing, maybe perhaps they're joking?
No.
But the fact remains is that, you know, as, when those guys go out there and work, they work hard, and they just go there, and of course, there's certain policy, if you're not covered, if you don't cover the trash, they won't pick it up, or, but at, at least there's something that they, the people already know that they, what they need to do, but in terms of payment, you know, whether they have paid or not, that's gonna be sort of like, uh, you have to iron that out, that problem.
We are, that's why I call the system archaic, because in absence of any route maps, okay, the, what we have been doing as a government is picking up everybody's trash that is on a residential route, okay? And so, we're almost there, Senator, to where you, what you're describing is that we have to know who's our customer and who's not our customer, we're almost there.
Okay, we, let's say we have, uh, fun, you know, a lot of families, like yesterday, would have a function in their house, right? And they normally would have a norm, uh, two trash cans that they would be picked up, thirty-gallon. Now, what about, you know, because this is an extraordinary, uh, event, right? They have six trash, you know, to be picked up, uh, so, could, they still pick up the six, uh, containers?
When you say extraordinary, are you saying because they were behind?
They have a party, and so, because of the Easter, you know, gathering?
You're correct.
So, they got more trash than usual?
They will pick up everything. At this point, there is nothing in the law that's, that limits the number of trash receptacles that we are obligated to pick up.
To be picked up? Okay, so you don't have that part?
Not, that, that's not...
The problem with some people today is that since their trash weren't picked up, they have, well, they have to get somebody that's a pickup, you know, to, to bring it over to, uh, you know, transportation, but what happened if they only have a small vehicle, and so they have to go there three times or two times, that means they have to pay ten bucks, right?
It's five dollars.
Five dollars every, every time they get there?
Yeah, yeah. But you know, with your help, Senator, that is something that we'd like, and also with Senator Espaldons and the rest of the legislature, limiting the number of, of waste receptacles is something that we'd like to go into, to make it more rate-appropriate, there's an equal base, you know, something where it is, um, totally accounted for in terms of the amount of money that we pay as a tipping fee, that's something that we need to, uh, correct.
Yeah, well, if I may interject, uh, that's one of many, many issues that, uh, we're working in collaboration with the Public Utilities Commission, we're ironing out that, uh, the current legislations to date, uh, so that we can create a remedial legislation that would, uh, address issues that Cynthia mentioned, and a myriad of other issues, but that's something that you have empowered, this body has actually empowered the, the PUC, Public Utilities Commission, to study that, to make recommendations, and then, uh, we will be coming down, um, this, this session hall, in some way in the near future, to handle the, the fixes or the remedial action necessary to make, uh, DPW solid waste operations operate more efficiently, and to allow it to reconcile and truly account for all its, its processes. So, yes, we are, we will be, uh, working, we have been working with the PUC, and we will be coming back down to clean up a lot of that, uh, old legislation.
So, uh, just one more comment now. So, in, in outsourcing, you're saying now that these people will be the ones to set up the procedures, and in, in terms of the collection, though?
No, no, uh, wha, what we are doing is, um, we will be regulating this bo, this, uh, these private companies, we will be dictating to them, uh, what are the different processes or standard operating procedures, uh, for simple things like addressing customer complaints, uh, how they will be registered, uh, how are they gonna be reporting to us so that we know in fact that, uh, respective customers are paying the tipping fee, uh, and, and basically all those other, the minutia, if you will, uh, of the solid waste operation. So, we will be dictating the, the procedures, we will be incorporating the operational plan within our, uh, our solid waste, residential waste collection, uh, outsourcing.
So what area are we talking about in terms of the outsourcing that will be, that you guys will be implementing? In the northern areas, or southern areas, central areas?
Well, actually, sir, what we've done is, uh, we've broken it up into districts and areas within those districts, and, uh, uh, we're giving it a, an itemized, uh, offering, so that you can have some companies say they wanna handle, let's say, the northern only, some companies may say, I wanna do the southern only, and some may be the central, or maybe some will say they wanna do all three of them. Uh, at the end of the day, the, the offerings that are made, uh, we will, of course, award it to, based on the selection criteria, award it to the most responsive offer, uh, in the interest of our government. So, yes, we are looking at a hundred percent, ideally, we want it a hundred percent, but, you know, God forbid, uh, uh, that the offers only wanna handle the northern and the central areas that are more lucrative, uh, based on the densities, and nobody wants to handle the southern, then of course, DPW will continue the mission, and to handle the, the areas that offers are not willing to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Apinko. Senator Wannpat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, looking at the governor's bill, your department's going to be cut ninety-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, is that correct, or is it?
Ninety-eight thousand, I'm sorry, what were you looking at?
No. I'm looking at G, because unless, in, in this handout sheet, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, you had seven-point-nine-million-dollar, seven-nine-four-three-five-one-eight, and then I'm looking at, um, the general fund of seven-seven-four-four-nine-thirty.
Got it.
Hundred, oh, hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand? What, what's the exact dollar amount that you're being reduced?
Well, um, the original appropriation was, uh, are you looking specific to solid waste operations, or, there's three different funding sources that we have, delaying in this budget, this budget act, so...
No, I'm looking at the general fund.
The general fund portion, which is seven-point-seven-four-four million.
And...
Okay, got it. Okay, so the question, if you may, repeat, please?
Yes, for the, for the general fund, what is your, the total, um, reduction for general fund?
Right, it's a reduction of one-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight.
Okay, now, how are you going to, what, what are some of the things that you're going to do in order to manage to, to live within now the seven-point-seven?
Okay, okay, if I may, um, as far as DPW's been concerned, especially for the last, the course of the last two fiscal years, and in my reading of my predecessors within the last four years, um, we always get appropriations of a certain figure, uh, it just so happens that, uh, we don't expend all those figures, we base ourselves on cash flow, and the amounts that we can actually encumber and unobligate based on cash flow and availability of cash, so, we don't, uh, we've actually been cutting over the last four, uh, five years of what's been appropriated versus what is actual, uh, because we're living within our means. As far as the reduction of, of the appropriated figure, uh, we feel confident that we're, we're still able to, to make the grade with what we, what cuts are being, uh, provided to us, uh, but we are also doing a lot of other proactive, um, exercises. One is, um, we are, we are migrating a lot of our, our mandates towards federally funded programs, like the Federal Highway Administration. A lot of our activities, we either outsource and no longer do it internally with internal force account, uh, we've outsourced it to private companies, for example, ponding basins, uh, maintenance of ponding basins, waterways, uh, grass cuttings along the shoulders and medians, uh, and we're even, uh, dialoguing with the Federal Highway Administration to have them, uh, fund a lot of our activities, and even create new activities, so that, albeit we have so much mandates out there, and in years past, we've not been able to accomplish all of them, we're just shifting from what we've been doing today, these particular mandates, to other mandates, uh, that are federally funded, and that's exactly what we're doing, we're, we're trying to get the lion's share of the wages and salaries, which is one of our biggest ticket items in our budget, uh, getting supplies, getting equipment rentals to be funded out of the Federal Highway Administration. Uh, we are also doing a lot of things in terms of, uh, you know, a lot of austerity activities, of course, turning off the power, uh, when you leave the restroom or whatnot. Uh, we have some, uh, bus operations, for example, their mechanics who drive twenty-four-hour vehicles are willing to pay for the fuel for their vehicles, uh, so that they, that way they don't have to keep transporting their tools from their personal vehicles over to, uh, an official vehicle, so they're willing to pay for that. Um, we're also realigning, uh, people, uh, upon their own volition to other areas that are pressing and that are funded by a, a, a federal funding source, so we are doing those kind of activities. Bottom line, we're also, uh, canceling contracts or reducing contracts, uh, that we have for supplies and xeroxing and whatnot, we're doing those kind of activities. Um, hiring, I mean, if you look at our numbers, uh, at least when I first got in, we had a complement of about four-hundred-and-eighty employees, uh, mind you, it was just under a thousand, uh, you can count as far back as seven, eight years ago, but it's down to four-hundred-and-eighty when I got in, we are down to, I believe, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven employees, and there's been a complete hiring freeze, uh, for those, uh, non-essential or non-critical, uh, but other than that, you know, we, we are doing a lot of austerity, a lot of the team, they're stepping up to bat, and they're, uh, they're cutting costs in one way or another, or generating revenues by, uh, coming up with a triple-A on some of our current fee structures, uh, for recovery, full-cost recovery, uh, so those are some of the exercises, uh, we're doing at DPW.
So the only vacant positions, what you gave us from the general fund then, is a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand dollars? For all, all, all positions under the general, that's funded under the general fund?
Right.
Is a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand?
Yes, that's our reporting, yes.
So is, are those positions then not going to be filled? As, and that's gonna be part of?
Yeah, as a, as a matter of fact, that, that is commitment that we are making, that, uh, a lot of these positions, uh, because there's a hiring freeze, uh, within, at least within DPW, is that we don't have intentions to fill these positions until we get out of the woods.
So, and, and those positions are strictly then six, uh, school bus drivers?
Right.
How then are you going to make up, you know, for these six positions, these bus drivers who would not be able then to be out, uh, to pick up and drop off schoolchildren?
No, we do, we do have a, 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 it's not ideal, if I may say, I mean, if we had a billion dollars, uh, certainly, I'll hire everybody and, and, and ensure that we don't have overtime, and ensure that, uh, that, uh, we have all the buses necessary, but we've, uh, with the double sessions, with the requirements that are being imposed by, uh, by our customer, the government system, we've managed to make the grade, and, uh, I, I, as I understand, it's one of the more cleaner running engines, we also have a complement of bus drivers that are recruits that are actually on training right now, so it's not like we're, we're, uh, in dire straits where we need to hire more people now, we've actually had these vacancies, if you look at history of, of bus operations, we've managed to live without, uh, you know, by attrition, we have some bus drivers that leave, we replenish them, we have new bus drivers. drivers, but we've always had vacancies throughout at least the last four years.
What's the average of vacant bus driver positions do you have on an annual basis?
Okay, I don't have the years prior to, to give you that average, but we, we always have vacancies. We don't necessarily fill them. In fact, we're looking at, through the budget bill, we're allowed to hire part-time bus drivers. So, we're looking at that venue as, as another source as opposed to paying overtime based on a union contract that, that was engaged years back, about three or four years back. But for the most part, Senator, what we're doing is we're trying to avoid hiring and if we do any hiring, we're going to try and work with the, the authorization given to us by you and that is hire part-time drivers for filling voids that we do have. But again, I want to assure the public and then yourselves that, that there is no crisis with our bus operations. We are able to meet the adequate education number 14, which is providing transportation to our, our schoolchildren. And even that, we still have some cushion, if you will, to be able to allow for, I guess, shortfalls should they ever occur in the future.
Well, I, I know that the visits that we've been making through the schools, only one school, as a matter of fact, indicated that they were having some problems in the afternoons transporting their students at the end of the day and having to release the older children at the same time as the younger children only because they would have to wait two hours before they would actually get home at the end of the day. But, you know, I mean, and then that's pretty good. I mean, although we have not gone to all the, the schools yet, but, and, and I think that the mere fact that you're actually looking at authorizing, I mean, being authorized to hire part-time bus drivers because in the mornings and then in the end of the day, so you have that gap in between that?
Yes.
Would probably allow you to do then, and I'm glad that you're actually looking then at, at that. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Wannpat. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the, the cuts proposed on your department, that would freeze all vacancies then?
Yes.
I, I just counted the number of vacancies on construction inspectors and you have 25 here showing. And at a time when this economy is actually picking up, especially in the area construction, do you think that you have adequate service to provide to protect the consumer, the consumer of this construction industries that are now performing these things?
First of all, the, the positions that you're referencing, those are federally funded positions. Those are actually out of the scheme or they're funded by Federal Highway Administration specifically and they're out of the scheme of this budget appropriations or this budget act.
But this doesn't mean then that it will not be, this doesn't mean that it will be frozen then? I just want to, no.
No, as a matter of fact, when it comes to federal funded positions, those are the ones that we're being generous. In fact, we're trying to migrate some personnel over to the federal funded side and even recruit. There's, there's, there's a, a more grave concern than just funding. It's actually having people come to the table. So, we've had these positions open, I would say, for over a year and, Senator, it's not even a money issue as far as us funding it. It's a twofold issue. One is it's a shortfall of those type of disciplines and specialties and secondly, as far as, as far as the Federal Highway Administration is concerned, they're willing to fund even six figures for these individuals. It's just that our local recruitment caps don't make the, the compensation lucrative enough or enticing enough for anybody to even want to come to the table and apply for these things. So, you know, I, I digress, but that's really our single biggest issue is that the money's there with the Federal Highway Administration. It's just that nobody's coming to the table.
These 25 vacancies, what percentage does this represent in your total construction inspect, inspection position?
Actually, this is a, we're more than doubling the quantity that we currently have. Again, DPW used to have a complement of, of over 1,000 employees. We're down to 480 and then now it's 457 and it's, it's continuing to diminish. We have people jumping ship. So, percentage-wise, the amount of inspectors we have onboard right now, I would say is approximately 15 to 20. So, we're more than doubling what we, we currently have and even then, we plan to grow that, that portion because there is, you're right, there is a, a boom right around the corner and we want to prep these people so that we can start enforcing and start allowing the construction to pro, to progress as opposed to being a bottleneck or impediment to the development of the island.
Does DPW, I mean, rather, about how many different fees does DPW charge? You charge fees?
Yes, yes. We, we do, we do have a rate, a fee structure for our building permit and plan review. That's our single biggest area for enforcement and it just so happens that the fee that we do charge is not cost recovery. It's actually a fee structure that was created over a decade ago and we have yet to go down that path of revisiting the, the fee structure and upgrading it to true cost recovery. And, and that one, we're working, we're working on that, on that.
I would be interested to look at that and perhaps maybe later on you can give me the name of the contact person so that, we have to look at that and perhaps if we can increase the recovery rate so that it can go back to the funds so that it can improve the service and maintain the service.
Thank you.
And again, I go for my office to look at that and, and consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Espaldan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody up there. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
I have several questions and, and you know, it's, I have oversight over your agency. I'm sure everybody up there is well aware of that. I've had the past 100 days to actually bring myself at the speed on not only your department but other, other agencies that fall under my purview as well. Your agencies, Department of Public Works seems to be the broadest of the agencies that I have. Now, Larry, can you just please, I know that you have several divisions under DPW. Can you just list them out for me real fast, please?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, there's five main functions within the Department of Public Works, at least remaining from an original PUAG that had nine. As you well know, four of them became autonomous, power, water, telephone, and I guess mass transit. The remaining agencies that are in there that handle island-wide activity are the island-wide transportation maintenance, which is maintenance and repair and specifying of all GovGuam's vehicles, equipment, heavy equipment and whatnot. The other one is the island-wide solid waste operations, which handles the island-wide transfer stations, the landfill, the residential waste collections. Then you have the island-wide highways division, which handles all highways, which includes bridges, ponding basins, waterways, guard rails, primary, secondary, tertiary roads. This is island-wide again. Then you have the island-wide building regulation or building department, which is not only for the, the building maintenance and construction but also for regulating development and building construction throughout this island. And the last agency is of course the island-wide bus operations, which handles bus operations for the transport of our children from, from their homes to their stations for both public and private schools. So, all island-wide activities, five main functions remaining.
Okay, thank you. Um, gosh, which one do we want to talk about first? Let's go to the federal, let's go to the highways division, if you don't mind. Now, I understand that we receive certain monies from the federal government for the Federal Highway Fund, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Do you know how much in, in essence per year we receive?
We get annually about $20 million from the Federal Highway Administration.
Okay, about $20 million, huh? Now, are there funds right now that have not been expended or have not been committed or for any projects out there?
Yes, actually, in our dialogue with the Federal Highway Administration, we found out that we have about, to the tune of about $120 million that have yet to be expended since 1974. These are projects that have not been engaged. These are, I, I guess for lack of a better word, just inactivity. So, we now have about $120 million that we can reprogram and assign it to rebuilding our, our highways. That's, that's the one level. Another one is we're looking at working in collaboration with the Federal Highway and Department of Defense to obtain, I think to the tune of $1.2 billion for defense access road money. So, we're working on that. And then lastly, we're looking at revisiting the, the current territorial highway fund or as it translates to DPW, the Guam Highway Fund, to secure some kind of a garvey bond where we can do roughly about $200 million worth of additional road improvements throughout the entire island. So, we're looking at a composite of $1.5 billion that we're working on to try and expand that within the course of the next four to five years. And we're working collaboration with not just federal entities but also the local Getco Office and, and of course eventually your office.
Okay, so, so basically, but we're saying, I mean, there, there are some monies that are probably coming down the pipeline is what we're saying in terms of federal funding as well as maybe even local funding.
That's correct.
But as we sit right now in terms of federal highway funding, we're sitting on about 200, $120 million?
That's correct.
Is there a reason why we haven't gone on ahead and released some of those projects? I mean, it would seem to me that if you're sitting on federal money that's, that's already kind of been okayed to work on our highways and we start the construction on our roads, first of all, it improves the roads, but second of all, it actually generates tax revenue. Is there a reason why we haven't gotten there yet? I mean, maybe, maybe some of those revenues could be used to this point or we wouldn't be, find ourselves in such a deep hole as it is today if we had already released some of those funds for the projects. Is there a reason why we haven't moved on that?
Well, from my reading of the DPW history, since 1974 to present, they've been expanding roughly about 13 to 14 million dollars a year. And when you have 16 to 20 million dollars coming in, it's no wonder they have $120 million sitting idle. In those great days when we had good money, we had a complement of 17 professional engineers onboard with the staff of, of engineering staff of about, of over 100 employees just doing these kind of projects. What I've determined is that now we're down to a level where we have only two professional engineers onboard and the resources have diminished dramatically that even when we put out openings, nobody's coming to the table to apply. So, I don't have the resources to, to implement the projects. So, what we've done since is, in, in, in discussion with the governors, what we're doing is we're, we're getting a private company to come into Guam, who's been there, done that with these type of federal programs and these are huge multi-billion dollar companies and they're going to come and do the actual implementation of this 120 million to the $1.5 billion in federal roads that we want to build. So, that's what's happening right now. We've actually done the RFP to get this, this consultant to come in here and actually implement the projects from start to finish, to expend the money, build the roads, the 120 million that we have right now all the way to the $1.5 billion. So, that's what we are doing right now. It's just that because it's funded, that same consultant's funded by the Federal Highway Administration, there were steps that we had to take in terms of the, the procurement processes, the review, the, the scoping of the project. And now we're actually, as I understand, the contract is, is the Attorney General's office eventually on its way to the governor's office and when they sign that, this company will hit the ground running, implementing all these projects.
So, you're saying basically that the lack of engineers at this point in time is, it's kind of been the real obstacle for you to be able to implement any of these projects?
That's correct, a lack of human resources within the department. And again, there is a major crisis out there in terms of these type of expertise and it's hard to recruit people. They're actually jumping ship from the government to the private sector now.
Now, is that the reason why now I, you know, and please don't take any offense, Josephine, is that the reason why Ms. Torres is the acting engineer? Is that your title? I'm sorry, what is, what is the title?
No, she's, she's the actual chief planner of the agency, but the, the chief engineer is actually on leave right now and she's just here to represent, to cover, at least represent the engineering division within DPW. So, that's, that's why she's here and likewise, another reason is, is when we do recruit for chief engineers, as I understand, if my date's wrong, somewhere in the early part of February, the Department of Administration started recruitment for just a generic chief engineer. Any kind of discipline will take it. Nobody's coming to the table. It just so happens that to implement these highway projects, you have to be a civil engineer. So, when you start requiring that they be a civil engineer, require that they have federal highway background, it just makes it that much more difficult to recruit someone with that, that expertise and, and even take an exception, even if federal highways, we need to pay six figures or whatever it costs to bring these people onboard, our local civil service requirements or I guess the HAY study says that the maximum we can recruit is a certain level. And even at that high level, step 10, it's not even enough to, to entice somebody to want to apply. So, what the department is doing is we're actually monitoring what the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Works Authority are doing when this body allowed them to, to do their own recruitment and their own grading scale and whatnot, that when they finish their process and they succeed with it, we would like that to be mirrored on to DPW so we can have those kind of privileges to recruit people of that caliber at the salaries that the federal highway is willing to pay.
Okay. So, how soon do you think that we will be able to get some of these projects out? Again, and the, the concern or the issue becomes, you know, how soon can we get that money circulating within the economy so we can start generating more taxes?
Well, a few things need to be said. As you well know, back about five, six months ago, we did these major advertisements, these part in our progress of projects that we're going to implement. Those are real monies. Those are all funded by, by the Federal Highway Administration. We were actually going to do that and we started advertising. Some projects, like, most of the projects, we were awarding purchase orders of contracts. But when you award these projects, it requires that you have a, a construction inspector or an engineer inspecting it, right, to make sure the work's done. Well, when you only have so much resources to do the work and you have so many contracts going out, we're having a situation where now the, the limited resources we have are spread too thin. So, what's happened is we do have the money, we have advertised and we're just slowly but surely implementing it. I'm not sure if you noticed throughout the island, but we're still paving roads, we're doing, we're cleaning a lot of ponding basins out there, we're cleaning a lot of waterways out there, we're, we're painting the medians, we're, we're doing a lot of the small ticket items right now that we could handle. We're even outsourcing it to private contractors. It's just that now we're even soliciting with the Guam Contractors Association and we're finding out that when we start implementing all these projects that we advertise and even more lettings that are coming out, that there's not going to be enough contractors on Guam to handle this. So, we're bringing it to the next level where this consultant is now going to go out and do partnering sessions to bring investors into Guam, international, to bring investors to Guam so that we can, they can handle the, the amount of construction that's coming down the pipe. So, right now, Senator, I just want to let you know that all those advertisements that we've advertised, we're slowly awarding it. Not because we don't want to award it all at one time, it's just that we're only awarding what we can handle.
Do you anticipate that this shortage of resources, as you said, in terms of engineers will, will be a persistent issue with this department? In other words, I guess what I'm getting at is eventually, does that mean that we're just going to have to privatize all engineering positions within DPW?
Well, this, this program management team that we're soliciting and, and once the governor signs they get onboard, that is exactly what we've done. We've actually completely outsourced the engineering department of DPW. And what's happening is with those engineers onboard, we're going to get them trained by these experts that come in, get them trained, get them assimilated to the function and once they get to a, a level of, I guess, responsibility that we're, we're comfortable with, it is then when we can say goodbye to the, the PMT or the program management team. But right now, we're at a level where we need to bring more resources from a private company, handle the entire project management from start to finish of the project and then when the lion's share of the project are done and our guys, internal guys are assimilated to that, that level or that competence level, it is then when we can relinquish the, the private company, you know, but again, that's like five years from now. It gives us time to, to implement all the projects, spend all the money, build all the infrastructure, but concurrently train our, our resources here in Guam so that they can, I guess, get back to the level that they should be of managing and regulating these projects.
Okay. Okay, well, you know, and, and I'm going to go off on a little tangent since you brought it up and we're, you know, you talked about, you know, you, we are out there, we are painting the medians and everything else. Now, it was brought to my attention over the weekend, I went to, to a function and there were several people approached me and there was, everybody witnessed and myself included. We, we basically witnessed the median painting crew down in Timooning and there were 10, approximately 10 people out there. One guy painting, one guy directing traffic and I'm not really sure what anybody else was doing out there. I mean, can, can you kind of give me a scope of why how so many people actually show up outside to paint a median at one point, particular time? This, this particular median, I believe, was right there at ITC intersection or maybe some, you know, somewhere around Timooning area? Again, it just baffles me and baffled the people that I was talking to. It's like, well, why are there seven, eight guys standing around while one guy's painting and one guy's directing traffic?
Well, this is not news. As you well remember, back about seven, eight months ago, there's this proposed realignment and a lot of equipment operators are not even have equipment. One of the things that I found out is that DPW has been neglected for, I would say, the last 12 years. You know, I mean, I mean, in, in the sense that there were a lot of employees, but when the equipment started aging, there was not an attempt to buy new equipment and, and furnish the, the DPW employees with the equipment. So, it took me about a couple of years to, of being there to, to realize that, hey, you know, we need to get some funding for these people, we need to get, there's no local know, we need to get some funding for these people, we need to get, there's no local funding. I mean, let's just say it as it is, there's no local funding to buy the equipment. So we've, at least within the, the last couple of months, we've been dialoguing with the Federal Highway Administration and we're revisiting that whole thing. We're looking at getting the federal highway to fund the purchase of this equipment, be it leased to own or be it equipment rentals or whatnot. And once we get DPW to the level where it has the full fleet that it needs for not just day-to-day activity, but also to be in a position to respond as a first responder for natural disasters or man-made disasters, it is then when we, you know, it is for that reason that we're actually dialoguing with the, the Federal Highway Administration to get that funded. And we're succeeding. We're just creating the programs now and we are optimistically looking at getting all that funding so that now management, at least the DPW, can represent that it has obtained the equipment for its employees to go ahead and deliver all this work. So what you're gonna see going forward with median painting and guardrail repairs and reflective paint and even painting the lines of the lanes so that it's very clear where the demarcation are between lanes, cleaning the ponding basins, maintaining the bridges and whatnot, we will have a full fleet where there'll be so much work that not only is there too much work for just DPW crews to spread out to two or three people per crew, but rather even contractors will be outsourcing that completely and having a whole myriad of construction activity for internal force account as well as outside private companies. But yes, Senator, one of the reasons why you're probably seeing a lot of, I would say that's probably the first time you've probably seen that where you have that many employees out there at one time. The highway maintenance and construction division, they've been aggressively going out there and painting that around the island. There, and this, these are concurrent activities that they're tasked, they have that, they have the ponding bases and whatnot, and of course, they have, they respond to all these emergencies, these floodings and whatnot, that I'm actually surprised that that actually occurred.
So am I.
I don't have an explanation for that, but if you notice, that's a very rare incident that you saw. And I think one of the things I'll, I'll take the blame for this time around is that I have not provided all the equipment for my staff. So I'm gonna work on that and get them the equipment so that there'll be so much equipment that pretty much every equipment operator will have their own equipment.
Well, that, that's, that's good to hear because that is one of the concerns and since we're going down that road, we might as well address it now also. Now, I have heard some complaints and some comments from people within DPW that they are not being given the proper equipment or they're not even giving, being given the ability to go and repair the equipment that is up there. I mean, it's very repairable and yet after X amount of times, of course, the, the piece of equipment deteriorates from, from not, it not being used and it not being maintained. And pretty soon, as I understand, now we're outsourcing. So again, we're touching upon outsourcing, we're talking about equipment. Now, as I understand it, and you can verify if this is true, because of the equipment that's being down, now we're actually outsourcing at a much higher cost than if our own people were doing it with DPW. Is that, is that a fact?
Well, it's a fact, but let me put that in perspective.
Please.
There are two funding sources here. With these two funding sources, one is local and one is federal highway, and they have certain conditions of how you can spend that money. Local funds, we're pretty much flexible. As long as it deals with highways, I can buy equipment, I can rent equipment, I can hire these type people and these kind of categories and whatnot and, and do this type of project as long as it's Guam highway related, right? In fact, this funding source is also funding building maintenance people, it's funding building inspectors and whatnot. They don't do highways, but they're funded because that's how our local appropriations panned out, right? Federal funds, there's a lot of money, but there's certain conditions of how you can spend that money. For one, they have this tendency to outsource projects. They will only approve it if it's outsourced to a contractor that can provide a performance bond in the event they default, they can claim against that performance bond. There's also certain standards and specifications that require certain things to be complied with. It's, it's a lot more stringent than it would be with local funds. So when I first came in, one of the, the things that I learned is that they will, they're willing to do all these maintenance projects and all these activities, provided we outsource it and not do it with internal force account. Keep in mind, Senator, there's history here. This was not created by our administration. This is history where the credibility of the, the government or the Department of Public Works did not bode well with the federal government. So there's reservations on what we can or cannot do with these funds. Well, now, I would say they trust us now and now they're allowing us to spend on these projects and they're even giving us ideas of how we can get equipment, how we can get projects funded and how we can get monies from the federal government to replace the general funds here. Basically, local funded people will do the work for federal highway, on the federal highway, and then you submit a voucher, get a reimbursement and that replenishes the funds. So in effect, we free up money from the local side. We free up money from this flexible side where now we can buy equipment and, and get all the, the fleets that our staff needs. Likewise, if we do a project, we can spec it out where it's a lease to own. You know, we lease this equipment for so many projects doing, going down the pike and then after a certain number of projects, we then own the equipment. Now we have a fleet. But when it comes to the maintenance site, you know, the maintenance site, they don't pay for maintenance of equipment. They will not reimburse you for that because the, their statutes do not allow for this, this kind of a voucher system where you pay for buying parts for maintenance. But this site does. So if we free up their wages and salaries to do projects here, it is, it is our intention to use the monies here to buy the parts, to pay for things that are not generally funded by federal highway, but to now be able to do those projects. So that's what we're doing. We're just realigning mandates, we're still performing the mandates of our people, but we are being a little bit more creative where the funds will allow on the federal site and freeing up some monies on this site so we can spend it for the maintenance issues and the things that we need to get done that are not fundable by the federal highway site.
And I, I appreciate that. However, if we start taking a look at, say for example, the solid waste division, right, where we have not invested in any new pickup trucks or, you know, dump, excuse me, trash pickup trucks per se, it's my understanding that we have allowed several of the trucks to, to deteriorate without replacing any of its parts and not, not maintaining them. And then it's also my understanding that these vehicles were then bought by private firms as, as again, as, as vehicles that were not working. And then it's my understanding that we went out and hired these firms to go ahead and do the functions that DPW was tasked with in terms of picking up trash. I can't help speculate that that would be definitely at a much higher cost, whereas if we would have had those pickup, those, those dump trucks picking up the trash and if we would have maintained them or at least bought parts, then we wouldn't have to outsource that, privatize that at how much? A hundred fifty dollars an hour maybe? I don't, I'm not really sure, but at a much higher cost. Can you, can you address that?
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure about, you know, equipment going down and then having the private company fix it and then now we are outsourcing them. Right now, there's only one company that provides one piece of equipment to complement our force, one packer truck. I, I won't mention the name of the company, but there's only one.
Okay.
It's not like we have a barrage of fleet out there and, you know, so I'm not sure how much truth there is to that kind of a statement. As far as buying new equipment, it is at least my intention to outsource this completely as was intended by law. And I don't see it prudent for me to buy new equipment when we're gonna give it to a private company who has to furnish their own equipment, their own assets and provide the service that they're gonna be compensated for.
No, I, I appreciate it. And I, I realize that you're looking forward when we, when you're talking along those lines. I guess I'm looking backwards because now we're, if we look backwards and bring ourselves up to speed as where, where we are today, we could probably come up to the conclusion, okay, there's probably a lot of areas where we did not use good judgment and which brings us to the hole we're in today. And it's kind of enlightening that you are looking prospective, looking into the future and saying, well, how can we diminish some of this, these problems that we've encountered that we've created for ourselves? However, even, even that being said, another, another area where this whole allowing the equipment to just run down or not repair it when it was necessary is at the coral pit area. As I understand it, we do have some machinery that was able to, that we have had in the past to go ahead and excavate some of the coral and I guess the equipment broke down and now we're out there again, outsourcing that area in which we have some very capable people to operate the equipment. We don't have the equipment up and running, so it necessitates us to go out and outsource it at again, a much higher rate than we would, what we would be spending if we were using our own operators with our own equipment. Can you address that?
Okay, yes. I understand that in years past, before I got in, I actually read that they were doing a lot of equipment rentals on the coral pit or equipment rentals in general for DPW. I couldn't understand why they would invest like fifteen thousand dollars a month when you multiply that times ten months, you can actually buy the brand new equipment twice over. So I didn't understand that logic, so I actually directed that they look at purchasing new equipment. And again, I'm referencing the coral pit as opposed to renting. The issue that comes out is, is there is not enough money to certify funds to buy the equipment lump sum, but there is enough money to buy, to rent equipment on a going forward basis. These are practices that have occurred before I got there. As far as, as far as going forward now, we are working to getting more equipment. I think, I think the conversation that was had with you, Senator, you obviously know a lot of information of the inner workings within DPW. There are other things that, that DPW will be working with the other agencies within the department, for example, solid waste operations. It just so happens that we're at a juncture where we need an increased level of coral that's above and beyond what the normal scheme was being delivered by the coral, been generated by the coral pit. So when we get these equipment, it's not to say we're putting contractors in it to replace any function or any person or any equipment, it's we're putting in equipment private companies to supplement the activity. It's just an interim window for an interim project. But once that project is completed, then we're gonna seize that, that activity. It's not a for everything or replacement of internal force account with a private contractor. It was just for an interim fix for an interim demand that's above and beyond the normal scheme.
Okay, well, let's talk about that demand. As I understand, the demand right now or part of that cover or part of that coral is supposed to be going to cover the Orta dump, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that happening on a daily basis? I mean, I'm, I'm hearing reports that when we took our, our field trip out there with the other senators, it was nice. I mean, I tell you, I mean, as nice as, I guess a dump can be, however nice that can be. However, after that field trip, there were some residents of the area who were complaining that, okay, that was more of a facade because in actuality, it's not a daily cover. And so the, the question becomes, are we just short of cover to do a daily maintenance of the dump? Or are we, are we diverting the, the potential cover, perhaps the coral, to other areas?
I'm not sure about diverting. Understand that our coral pit serves a myriad of functions out there. We have the funerals, we have the road repairs, we have, of course, the cover fill, and then sometimes we have erosion just by rains and floods and whatnot. So, so there's, and this is island-wide basis. So to, there's no conspiracy or attempt to, to divert any coral from the, from the solid waste activity at Orta. What's happened, Senator, is that on top of that coral, the cover material that's needed at the, at the Orta landfill, there's a new activity where we're, we're building a temporary roadway down in La John. That's a project that we've been working on to get access to the site, to work on the, on the new landfill. So when you have that additional task above and beyond the funerals, the erosion, the road repairs, you see all those things, then that's where we say we need to supplement the operation. And that's why we're doing this interim fix to take care of that additional project above and beyond the normal scheme. At some point in the future, when that's done, this whole thing will go away. But no, there is no diversion. I don't think there's any conspiracy. I just, I'm just saying, bottom line, there's just a huge demand for a low supply and we're just supplementing it. That's all we're doing.
And because of that demand, that's, that's what forced, that's what's forcing us to outsource supplemental labor requirements to be able to, to mine that coral pit.
That's correct.
Is that what you're telling me?
That's exactly right.
Do we have any equipment down at the coral pit that we could be utilizing?
Yes, we do. We have some equipment down and, I'm sorry?
What do we have that's down?
Well, we have a, a dozer that's down and we're working on getting the parts. Once we get the parts by the, by the vendor, it is then when we can replace it and then have it back up.
You know how long that's been down?
Well, I know it's been down before I got onboard and I know it's been down for, I would, I would say for at least two, three years it's been down. And it's a matter of us getting the, the part from the vendor and...
So, okay, and it's a part. Any idea what the parts, what is, what the part is?
Well, I don't recall the specific part, but I know it's like a two hundred fifty dollar item. And I, I think the particular vendor has an issue which most vendors throughout this island have with the government of Guam. And that is, it's not just a two hundred fifty dollar item, but there's a composite of all these other outstandings that they have put us on credit hold. So albeit the part may be small, it's a, it's a bigger issue that's actually preventing us from getting that, that small part.
Well, I, maybe so. I mean, I'm sure that there are other sources from which we might be, but it doesn't have to be manufactured direct or could, could, could possibly be, be from another vendor. Is that not correct? I mean, in other words, we have vendors all over the world who probably sell the same parts for the same equipment and just because we're banned from, from sourcing from, from the one we've been normally having, if you only talk about two hundred fifty dollar part, that means that we're gonna have to supplement or, or replace the workings of that bulldozer with another bulldozer that I'm sure is being privately hired or outsourced, I guess is the correct terminology. How much are we paying to outsource that, that work in lieu of two hundred fifty dollars?
Well, as I understand, excuse, excuse me, as I understand, this particular vendor is the sole provider of this thing and this part and, and there's no other, you know, I, I bounce this off my staff. Is there any way similar to what you're saying, we can get this from some ABC company out there? And as I understand, that particular part is, is a proprietary nature and it belongs to that sole provider, so I'm sort of like, my, my hands are tied.
I don't know about that, but okay.
I welcome any ideas.
And I, and maybe after this, we will talk about some of those things. I think we could source it out, even if it's a used part for now, because it would, it would seem to me, but two hundred fifty dollar part, you know, if we can't, if we can't find it, I'm sure we can manufacture it some way. I mean, there'd be, I'm not really sure what the part is for a two hundred fifty dollar part. But again, that wouldn't, I'm not here to, to discuss the trivial of, of that part. I'm just here to, to, again, in the broader sense, for two hundred fifty dollars, right, with the trade-off over the past two years and who, who knows how much longer before that, that we've had a piece of equipment that's been down and we've had to substitute us, our men doing the job, which they're being paid for right now and they're not doing, and going in ahead and supplementing it by outsourcing it at a much higher rate, but maybe I would imagine at least a hundred dollars an hour. So somehow, we're getting, we're getting shafted on this whole thing. I don't know. Do you agree or am I barking up the wrong tree on this one?
I am in complete agreement and there's just bureaucracy, there's just situations that are above and beyond my title, but yes, it's so commonsensical, Senator, and I agree.
Okay. You know, I have a few more. There's, there's a few more of the people, the senators who are in line? Okay, what, what I'll do is I'm gonna go ahead and ask maybe just a few more questions and then I'll, I'll, I'll turn the, turn the floor over. Well, I tell you, right now, as from this sheet, you've gotten about eighty-two percent of your appropriations. Is that correct? You've been allotted by eighty-two percent, we're midway through the year. This is the sheet from, it says, two thousand and seven, general fund appropriation and allotment analysis, and it says the total appropriation was, was seven million nine hundred forty-three thousand five hundred eighteen dollars. And the year-to-date allotment has been six million five hundred fifty thousand dollars and that comes out to about eighty-two percent of what your appropriation is. And we're halfway, only halfway through the year. Are you familiar with, with that at all?
Well, again, I've not seen that sheet, but you know, we have done our internal numbers from the ACE four hundred system.
Okay.
And this was as of April fifth.
Okay.
So our, our, for general fund alone, from the total appropriation to the year-to-date allotment, we have released about sixty-nine point four nine percent. So, you know, I mean, bottom line, I guess your message is, will we be, be short at the end of the fiscal year? Yes. If that's what you're alluding to.
Okay. And one of the reasons might be because we're doing operations as such that we are hiring, we're outsourcing equipment and we're not actually replacing it with parts that we could actually be bringing the cost down, correct?
That would certainly be one of the components, but certainly not the lion's share of it, yes.
But I mean, you figure if you find enough of these, of these components and put them all together, that would seem to be a lion's share.
Well, I mean, bottom line, one of the single biggest things that DPW faces is what we call a consent decree. So we did not budget for the consent decree in our, in our appropriation or budget act. And we, we spent just under $9 million composite of, of consent decree items. So if, if you want a single big ticket item for how we're spending more, or how we're at a spending level that will not take us to the balance of the fiscal year, you know, spreading it equally, it's because of consent decree. So that's the single biggest ticket item.
So you're talking about basically the landfill down in the La John area?
I'm talking about all activities for compliance to the consent decree. And that's the closure of the order dump, the new landfill, and the household hazardous waste facility.
Okay. So let's go to the landfill dump. I mean, you know, we'll revisit this issue again then. Let's go to the landfill. And, and one of the observations that I made along with several other senators on our trip down there was the lack of a scale. Now, as I understand it, most jurisdictions, if not all jurisdictions that, that have a, a dump or municipal landfill, basically charged by weight. And we are charging by cubic yard. The big explanation behind that is because we don't have a working scale. Now, as, as long as you've been director, I guess for the past two and a half years, the scale has not been working, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a reason why we have not gotten that scale to work to the point so we can charge accordingly?
Give me one second.
Sure.
Okay, yes Senator, I've been there two years and I did not get a scale. I'll take that. But, you know, coming into public works, there's a lot of things that I need to do and read and get up to speed. Yes, we are in the process. I've directed my staff to get an RP, an invitation to bid out, to get the scale house. And we are definitely gonna purchase a scale so that we can start measuring on volume as opposed, I mean, on weight as opposed to volume. So yes, we are there. Again, I'll take it because there's just a lot of things that I had to get up to speed and read on, even changing their processes and their thought processes so that we can, I guess maximize unlimited resources. So yes, we are gonna implement, and we're gonna get that out. Within two weeks, there'll be an invitation to bid for a scale house.
Okay, good enough. Which brings me back, and again, I understand the complexity of the responsibilities that you have overseeing five different divisions over a very diverse agency, right? Which brings me down to the solid waste division. And again, with all due respect to Cynthia Jackson, I know that she's been working hard and, and what is Cynthia's title again?
She's a program manager for solid waste operations.
The program manager?
Right. She's acting, acting program manager.
How does that differentiate from the superintendent of solid waste division? Or, or supervisor, or whatever?
Yeah, the, the key title, the, the department chief for that, for that division is usually the solid waste superintendent.
Okay.
But what's happened is with this consent decree, there's a bigger issue that's in front of us than just day-to-day operations. It's consent decree which is day-to-day operations and all these compliance requirements by the, the US District Court or the US Department of Justice or the US EPA. So that's taken a front burner priority.
Well, can I just ask, who made that determination that they are symbiotic? In other words, the day-to-day operations is the day-to-day operations. The consent decree basically is an order from the court of what we should be looking at down the road. In other words, the closure of the dump and the opening of, of a system in which we can dispose of our waste, right? The day-to-day operations is the day-to-day operations. It's not really addressing the issue of closure of the dump or opening of a new alternative for our waste disposal system. And that's, I guess, what it comes, I guess that's what bothers me. I know that, and in looking at the sheet that was handed out to us, we have a lot of people in this solid waste division. And, and again, because the task is so big, when we start talking about closing the dump and opening a new alternative to our waste disposal system, why is, why Ms. Jackson, and again, please don't take any offense, I know you're very capable in a lot of areas, but this is a task that requires more than one person. Why are we not delegating the, the responsibilities accordingly? In other words, right now, I think I see Mr. Dominic Munya, who was the superintendent of solid waste, right? Now, if he's designated to be the day-to-day operations person in charge of the day-to-day operations, then that should be his responsibility. And Ms. Jackson's responsibility, if her responsibility is to make sure that she oversees the implementation of the consent decree, then that should be her focus. But it doesn't seem to be working that way. Is there a reason why?
Well, I, I made that determination, that directive to make, make a consent decree oversee the solid waste operations as opposed to the reverse. Two-fold logic behind that. One is we wouldn't have been in this predicament had we been doing our operations properly from day one. This consent decree has been an issue since 16 years ago. And had they done, solid waste operations done what they should have been doing all the way, and this is no denigration to Mr. Munya, he's, he came in about the same time as me. I'm not, I'm not bad-mouthing anybody here.
That's right.
But bottom line, 16 years ago, had they been doing what they were paid to do, then we should be okay. We are now, a consent decree in front of us because we were not doing what we were doing in operations from the very beginning. That's one. The second thing is, I don't have a consent decree funding source. If I have funding for consent decree and I have funding for operations, which I do now for operations, but if I have funding for consent decree, then not a problem, it can take its own parallel track. But I need funding to get us into compliance to this consent decree and the solid waste operations violation. And that's exactly what I'm doing.
No, and I, I can appreciate what you're saying, but I don't think you're hearing what I'm saying. And in essence, let me bring it down to a simpler level. Yes, and, yes, we can look 16 years ago, and as you just stated, Mr. Munya was not there at the time as the supervisor or the superintendent, whatever, whatever his title is. Knowing that now, right, it still doesn't mean that we shouldn't be managing at a, or spreading the responsibilities out as opposed to centralizing all the authority in one person. In other words, I would imagine it would, you know, it would, it would behoove us to use the personnel we have a little more judiciously. In other words, say for example, with Ms. Jackson, she has a big task ahead of her in terms of, of trying to conform with the consent decree and, and all that it entails. And that's closing the dump and opening it up. And yes, if we had done it 16 years ago and done it properly, we would not be in a, in the situation we are now. But that doesn't mean that we don't utilize our people that we have right now, right, to go ahead and tackle the task. I mean, we have some new faces. In other words, say for example, someone like Mr. Dominic Munya. If we are in charge, if he's in charge of day-to-day operations, then it's not something that Ms. Jackson should concern herself with. In other words, he has to report directly to you.
Senator?
Yes?
Dominic is still in charge of solid waste operations. I never took it away from him.
Okay. Well, it's just that, some of the comments that I've gotten-
Do you prefer that Dominic reports directly to me and Cynthia reports directly to me?
Well, no, I'm not gonna micromanage your agency.
Okay, I, I think we should actually discuss about the budget itself.
Wait, no, and I, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. The reason why I'm bringing this up, because the relevance here is that when we start talking about cost savings and, and, and the wise use of our money, again, we have to make sure we understand the inner workings of what's going on. Because if there is a mis, if there is some mismanagement, and maybe not intentionally, but it's just areas that perhaps need to be looked at, then that could reveal some errors that we could save some costs, still move forward in the mandates of the department, and, and perhaps make sure that our alignment is correct. Again, if we go back to even just the coral pit issue and the machine that's down for $250 part, right? And it's been over for two years. And if we've been outsourcing that area, right, which we could have been doing it for the past two years, how much have we spent it as opposed to how much we could have saved? So again, there is relevance. And I'm sorry, and yes, I will move on. In fact, at this point in time, I will go ahead and relinquish the floor and I, I reserve it right come back.
Okay, for the, for the sake of the group, it is in the standing rules that we have about 15 minutes for everybody. And, but there's, you know, but you can, no, you can afterwards, after everybody speaks, then you can raise your hand again. Okay, so Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I want to acknowledge first of all, I, I appreciate some of the issues that the director has mentioned, especially in, in regards to the highway division of Department of Public Works. Because I have a little of the institutional knowledge. In fact, I recall some of you folks, some of the issues in, in the last two years of the previous administration, there was a policy move made. And part of that policy move, and I'm not here to question whether it was right or wrong, but it was a strategic decision on economic development. And of course, since I had oversight on the highways, I, I wanted to keep monies to highways. But again, a decision was made where, again, with the US Department of Transportation acquiescence, but again, it was at the, it was at the behest of, of the administration that there would be a strategic plan for the airport and for the expansion of runways. And with that decision, and I fully understand the length of these, you know, these programs for federal highway funding, but when the administration, with the concurrence of the board and management of the airport, and again, they had the ear of the former governor, when their decision was made to, to focus highway funding into, to the airport, you know, obviously, once that, once that decision was made, to my protests, but obviously, you know, once you start building, expanding on runways, you can't stop. So, you know, a decision has been made and it made, was made several years ago, again, in an earlier administration. This administration has continued on it, but again, this is, you know, once, once the approval was made, I think with, again, with US Department of Transportation, then the die was cast. But obviously, for every doll, every dollar that went towards the runway and towards expansion of the airport was $1 less in to Department of Public Works for, again, the, the renovation or the upgrade of our, our existing highway system. And, you know, I'm not here to ask the question, that's something that we could ask with the airport, how, how far along they are in, in regards to their strategic master plan. But obviously, what it did for Department of Public Works and their highway master plan, it kind of extended the completion date for that master plan. Anyway, that's just a little bit of institutional information. And, but I, I do recall, it did affect maybe about a third of your funding annually. And I, I don't know whether that has changed. But anyway, that's, do you have anything, why, do you have anything coming?
No, I actually just wanted to add to you Senator, because of that incident, believe it or not.
Yeah.
The sweeping federal highway legislation that was passed in August 2005 in Congress actually prohibited any further activity of the sort going forward for, on a national basis, just because of that incident.
Yes, but unfortunately, that has still committed future funding towards that, towards the airport.
No.
Oh, it's not?
It's final, it's over.
Oh, so it's over?
Yes.
So whatever we lost out of 19, from 1998 on till now, at least, we're going back into those monies going to the highways.
Completely.
Correct, okay, great, great. The question I had is with, on your solid waste operations fund. Again, I, I listened to the radio this morning and there was, I guess there was some folks that were listening in and made phone calls to, to the, the host of the station. There is a program now, is there a program in place? Are, are you picking up, at least in, when it comes to enforcement of past due tipping fees for residential, is that occurring right now?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. What do you anticipate with, with this enforcement of paying for past due obligations? What do you anticipate taking in, in funding for residential? For the totality of the year?
Well, as far as our AR, we're looking at close to 2 mil in AR. So we're looking to hope to gain both from the residential and the commercial to recoup some of this money.
The AR, when you're saying 2 million in AR-
Close to, it's, it's very close.
Would, would that be on top of what you currently have appropriated? I think you, with the budget, we had 5.8 million for, for tipping fees.
Okay, what we're trying to collect is of the delinquent accounts, right? Things that we have billed and people are now 61 days and beyond delinquent. Those are what we're trying to collect.
Yeah. So what do you anticipate your collections will be by the end of the fiscal year? I, I do know that you're stating in the budget, even though that is not the general fund, but it's about, we're about basically the same as what we, we had projected in the beginning of the fiscal year. 5.8 million?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, Senator, if I may, if I may add, if you look at at least a couple of years, last couple, if not three years, what was appropriated versus what we collected are two different numbers. Obviously, the collection is, is lower. I believe last year, we collected 4 million. It wasn't the 5.9 as originally projected.
Yeah.
It was about 4 million, a little bit over 4 million. The year prior to that, I think it's the same scenario.
And what was, and what was disappointing about that, if you took, remember the original projections, we were looking at about $3 million coming in from the commercial side and $3 million coming in from the residential side. But again, maybe you guys can correct me, but looking at, at residential tipping, you were at about 10% of what had originally been, I mean, at the worst point of, of the collections issue. And what was occurring is that the collection rate was at a higher rate than originally projected as opposed to, for commercial side. But on the, on the residential side, you were at about, and again, at the worst point, was it 10% Cynthia? 10?
Yeah, well, it was below 20, yes.
Below 20, it was in the teens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we've done a lot better.
So that's why I'm saying, the 5.8 is, is you're sticking to that number as well?
Yes, we are. It's a, it's a, a working towards a number. Well, one thing I want to let you know overall is that our collection rate has increased from, I believe, just under 30% to a 50% level. And we're working to the, I guess, the best business practice of 95% collection rate, build versus collection.
Actually, I want to congratulate you, looking at your year-to-date as of February 28th, you're up by around 20, 27% give or take a percent.
We're heading in that direction Senator, and a few things that we need to notice is there's the billed accounts that we were billing. It's not necessarily-
Yeah, let me, let me continue on my question. Year-to-date, you're at 3,56,000 as of February 28th. And that's not even halfway through the fiscal year. And the only reason I bring that up, if, if collection rate, if, if you are changing in your, in your collection policy and looking at trying to get past due obligations, then your, your projection, and again, I want to be conservative, but your projection at 5.8 would appear to be very conservative. Right now, in fact, that, again, what I originally thought from the previous year, your collections on, on commercial side are, are up by about 600, 615, 614,000 dollars. And that means you're up, you're up by 2 million. Actually, your year-to-date, 2 million of your 3 million collections is, is, is commercial. You've only got about a, less than a million bucks on the household side. And that's always been an issue. The, what do you anticipate collecting on the residential side between now, I mean, for the remainder of the fiscal year?
Pretty close to it. They represent, give me a minute right here, real quick. 1.2.
You, you anticipate collecting 1.2 by the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
Right now, year-to-date, you're at 900, this is as of February 28th, 921, 922,000. So you're only anticipating a little less than 300 grand, 200,000?
There's a reason for that Senator. One of the things that's happening here is that we've been, at least most recently since October to present, we've been more aggressively billing and reconciling accounts. So what's happened is you have people that are paying arrears just four years prior and, and they're paying it now. So you have like major dips and, and spikes on our, on our chart here.
Yeah.
But basically, at the end of the day, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be, or say, we're gonna be conservative and we're not gonna project that this is gonna be a straight line of, of monthly revenues of 100,000 a month.
Yeah. Again, when, with your, with your collections into the solid waste operations fund, and the reason I'm bringing this up is it, it's obvious that you are concerned, which is good. But at the same time, you know, some of the issues, again, in the radio talk show was, again, the problem with breakdown on equipment and, and because of that, some of the issues for, for folks complaining about, about, about service. It appears that if you continue on your collection efforts, I think you have about how many, how many- how many households are you billing?
About twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand. At what amount per, per household, eight dollars?
It's about ten dollars.
Ten dollars. So twenty-two, twenty-three thousand households times ten dollars.
Two point three million.
Two point three million dollars. And again, if you're tracking at one point two million and at five minutes into the fiscal year, you're about nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. If you, to speed up the, I mean, to intensify those efforts, I see no reason why you can't go over the six million dollars. You're, you're already at, you're already at two, over two million dollars for commercial side. And I don't, again, I don't know the breakdown on how much is on personnel, but how much, and how is on, how much is on equipment. But with your conservative numbers, I think, you know, there should be enough room, especially at the five point eight million dollar appropriation. Hey, that's a question. What if you do go over the five? Because we, if, if there has been five point eight million appropriated and you do collect six point, now let's say, if you keep on going on this pace and you collect six point three or six point four, can you spend it?
No.
You're gonna have to appropriate it.
General fund.
Ah, so, okay.
And we will come back if we need to.
Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have at this point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, and welcome to the representatives of the Department of Public Works. And of course, to Larry, we're very happy to hear you and see you here, Larry. I want to commend you for always being available to the public through the media to clarify questions and keep the information to the people there because the public always interested in knowing what's happening with Public Works projects and concerns. I was pleased to learn this morning that you folks are ratcheting up your tipping fee enforcement program. And I want you to know that first thing this morning, I went over and paid my tipping fees.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Because I don't want to be in arrears and I don't want to be on the front page of the PDN. So thank you for giving us the time to do that. Now, I do have some serious questions, Larry, and these are questions that have been in my mind for, for quite a long time. There's a lot of financial implications involved and I know many people in the community are concerned about this. First of all, can you please tell us, are you negotiating for the purchase of land on the site in Dundan where the new landfill is planned for?
Yes, we are.
How long have your negotiations been going on?
Well, I understand, Senator, that that's not the only thing we do, but I would venture to say it's within the last four to six months.
So these are active negotiations?
Well, there's, there's, there's things that are, we'll take blame for, for example, we had to redo the meets and bounds of the survey property, the appraisal, we had to do a second appraisal and so I, I wouldn't say that we've been negotiating for six months. That's a pretty lengthy negotiation. There's other things that occurred in that, in that window that are bringing us up to speed with things like rights of entry. For example, there's an immediate need that we need to take care of some things for hydrogeological studies versus the true meets and bounds of what, what we need to condemn or to take for our ultimate requirements.
All right. But you've been in communication with the owners of the properties involved?
Yes, we have people working on that, yes.
All right. Now, earlier this, this afternoon, you mentioned that you're already in the process of designing a road, perhaps a temporary road, to allow you to access the area to do some preliminary work, is that correct?
We, we are working, I believe, with the State, State Department, is that the name of the?
The Department of Navy.
Department of Navy to try and acquire that temporary access for, you know, accessing the property. But we haven't started any construction, we're in dialogue with them, and once we, we get that T's crossed and I's dotted, it is then when we're gonna need the coral, in the coral pit to do the temporary work.
Is, is some of that property owned by the, the government, federal government?
Yes, yes. In fact, that's the actual, the temporary road is what we're looking at, belongs to the federal government.
A portion of the, a portion of this temporary road goes through the property that's owned by the Department of Navy, which most people know as the NASA tracking site. That's the property we're talking about.
I see, okay. Now, none of us here are privy to any negotiations, we're not involved with any of the key players. However, I have major concerns. Should the owners of the property say, "We don't want to sell the property, we don't like what you're offering us," what is your Plan B?
Plan B, well, I've been led to understand by, by legal consults that, you know, we do have a compelling community interest here for an eminent domain. Bottom line, the order landfill has to be closed, it's a violation of Clean Water, Clean Air Act, and there needs to be a new location for receiving waste for the entire island. So there's been, there's been arguments that have been presented to us that, by counsel, that we do have a compelling argument for eminent domain. And, you know, as far as a Plan B, I would venture to say that if we have to, you know, if, if there's, there has to be an alternate site other than a zone, then we have to sharpen our pencils and start anew. Understand also that it's, as of current, we've expended just under ten million dollars, thousands of man-hours, many of contract designs and engagements to date. And, you know, if we want to go down that path again, I'm gonna be seeking some money because we can't do it without money.
Well, you know, the concerns that I have, and I, I'm sure some of my colleagues have, and I know people in the community have because they call me all the time or come to see me and other senators, is, of course, the site itself, that's still controversial. The federal government may have said it was good site. Unfortunately, the federal government didn't really consult with those to be impacted the most for the site. The water that's there as a future source for the island creates much concern. Even Guam Water Works itself, as you know, publicly stated, that is not the right site for the landfill. That came from Mr. Craddock, was reinforced by his engineers, and yet we still proceeded, apparently, with that site. Mr. Perez, I'm concerned about spending public monies wherever it comes from for that project, knowing that very soon, this is going to become another issue in the legislature, the actual location of the proposed landfill. And I would like to suggest, at this point, sincerely, that you folks come up with your Plan C. Your Plan A is to purchase the land if the owners will allow you to purchase it. Your Plan B is to condemn the land if they don't want to sell you the property. But you need a Plan C, which is an alternate location. Because, and I, I think you should be very cautious about spending money without first, having first a definitive commitment on the part of the property owners that they're willing to sell you the land or that you're willing to go as far as the courts to condemn the land. And certainly, I think you need a, a backup plan in case that site becomes untenable. Because the issue is not closed. And there's a number of us here who shall speak to this in the future, I think, that are not pleased with the site for various reasons. I commend your work, I know you're under the gun with the federal government, the consent decree, I know what that's like because when I was a member of the CCU, they were on our backs too about clean water and all these other issues. But this matter is one where I frankly would be very reluctant to spend thousands, hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars on something that's gonna be challenged. And I think you need a Plan C. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the next member is Senator Respechou. Just to remind the group, we, we are in Section G and we have Guam Highway Funds of six point seven million. And the Solid Operation Fund is five point eight and the General Fund is seven, seven point seven. Senator Respechou.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. Director Perez, you've been talking about this hundred twenty million dollars from federal highway administration funds for quite some time now. And during the past election, we've seen a lot of billboards going up that says, "Pardon our progress, we're doing this, we're doing that." And I really appreciate the questions asked by your Oversight Chairman to ask you why these billboards were, let me paraphrase, why, why the project was publicly announced and then all of a sudden, we don't see any follow-through with the actual work. And you testified that it's because you don't have the manpower at this point, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Now, you've been talking about this hundred twenty million dollar figure for some, some time now. Can we get a confirmation in writing from the Federal Highway Administration as to whether or not the money is actually there? You never told us the origin of the money. Is this money sitting in some bank account? Do you think this legislature is gonna believe or myself as a member of this legislature believe that, that if you don't expend these federal funds, it's carried over? My understanding is that most federal funds, if they're, unless they're specific, they expire. So if you don't use it, you lose it.
Yes. Well, as a matter of fact, we did have a, on November 3rd last year, we had a partnering session with the public and all the senators were invited, you were invited. And there is a communicate from the federal highway administration that affirms that the money does exist and that there is no sunset provision on any of these funds. So, yes, we can get that to you, we'll give you a copy of that presentation, not a problem.
How many more years, there's absolutely no sunset provision?
Fortunately, there is none.
And you could provide that, at least to me, I'm very interested because I've been hearing you talk about this money for quite some time now and I just wanted to know if this federal funds does not expire. You mentioned also that one of the reasons why you can't maintain the daily cover up at Oradot is because you're improving some kind of temporary access into Dundan? Is any?
It's apples and oranges. The, the, we do have cover fill at the, at the Oradot site happening and we are getting supplemental resources at a coral pit to get the supplemental cover fill for the Le John site, which has not started yet. So those are two different projects, two different activities.
And how much of, of government taxpayer resources have been spent already in the, in the study and the design of the landfill in Dundan?
Well, just, just a contract alone, Cynthia, what, about three to four million, the design, for the design portion. I would, I would venture to say just under four million dollars total, just for Le John site. And that includes the design works, the hydrological studies, the environment impact statement, site selection activities, the public hearings that we've had, the many public hearings, mind you, that we've had. Many opportunities and, and all the NIMBY feedback that was out there is about just under four million dollars.
From the very beginning, Director, I've always wondered why the government didn't acquire the property before committing all this government resources to it. And this has everything to do with your budget presentation before the legislature and the kinds of decisions we have to make to the fate of your agency. Why, why didn't the government acquire this property and then begin to do the, spend the money that's required for the, to prepare the site or even to evaluate the site, whether or not that's the most feasible location?
Well, actually, as I understood from the project, Cynthia was involved from the very beginning. They started with a, I guess, an island-wide study of, of where would be the best site for, or the, the site with least resistance and the site with least impact to the, the environment. And when they assessed the entire island, they determined, I believe it's about, about twelve sites.
Well, I understand the site selection process and Cynthia's made many presentations as well as yourself before the legislature, but should the most logical next step be to acquire the property?
Yes, and that's what I was alluding to. Once they got onto the, the actual site, the, the top three, they did the environmental study and then they narrowed it down to the single one. The last one is when we started the process, as you well know, to acquire government property, you have to do an appraisal. And they've done the two appraisals that's required. And we've gone down that path and, and in that process, just to get the appraisals, you need to get money to get, to fund the appraiser services and the bureaucracy, the procurement activities and whatnot. It got us to the point where now we have two appraisals and now we're in the process with the eminent domain processes, the legal activities, and we're here where we are now. So we are in the process of acquiring the property. We haven't done any construction, it just so happens that we're in a parallel track doing the design with the presumption that we will get the land in due time because of the immediate need of the community.
Have you determined where this, where we're gonna access the, if the...
Can I, can I just intervene? I think we're digressing from subsection G, so...
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, you've given latitude to other, you've given latitude to previous speakers and as soon as I start asking, you lay the rules on me.
I will allow you for at least one more minute to go ahead.
I didn't know there was a time limit, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, there's fifteen minutes.
Only when I get the mic, I guess.
But you can have, and I'll recognize you for another time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was asking you, Director Perez, have you determined the entrance of the new landfill, if it's, if the government proceeds to opening up a new landfill in the Dundan area?
Are you talking about verse, the north versus the south? Is that what you're...
The south. I've, I've heard some talk about possibly cutting in from Windward Hills. And I wanted to know if you could give me some peace of mind as well as the surrounding area, if that's, if there's any fact to that.
No, no, I can, I can say right now, that's not on the table.
Okay. Just, just a final thought, Director. You know, you've, you're asking our island to buy into this process where we're going to close Oradot, we're gonna open up a new landfill. You were involved in a previous process with the GTA privatization where you made assurances that none of those employees will lose their jobs with, at least within a five-year period. Now, we see many of those cases now. This is your opportunity and my opportunity as well to ask you, aren't there any of those employees that recently lost their jobs at GTA? Couldn't you have absorbed them at Public Works?
Actually, we've absorbed a lot of them. I would say at a minimum, twelve of them are on board with GTA, with DPW.
But there's still many more that have been let go.
A lot of them have been absorbed with Department of Public Health, Department of Mental Health, Department of Administration, the Guam Water Works Authority, GPA. I mean, if you want me to do an inventory, we can do a FOIA and request for all this information from the agencies. But, but Senator, understand that most of these employees have been absorbed within the government already. Not all success stories, I'll tell you that much, but the reality is majority, the vast majority of them have been absorbed within, within the government.
Are you, are you then still open and looking at those employees that haven't been absorbed and finding possible places for them within the government?
They're, in my recollection, when we did the, the privatization initiative, we've had many dialogue with the Civil Service Commission, Department of Administration, we've had many attempts to migrate them before the privatization and we've succeeded in a few. And there are those who did not even sign on to the program because they, they wanted to stay with the private company.
But how, but how did GTA get away with letting them go when there was a five-year period that they were... Do you want me to...
Well, are you answering behalf of GTA or in behalf of Director Public Works?
I'm not sure which role I'm in right now, but I can tell you...
Can you just get into whether they are hiring over DPW, then from there we can go on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Well, I understand that most of the, the vast majority of the employees that wanted to move on have moved on. Fifty percent of the employee base, as I understand, are still the original GTA. Some have moved on to the private sector, other entities, but most of them have been assimilated into the government of Guam. The, the, there is, there should be a listing of, I guess via the Transition Office, of where all these employees are actually at. But again, Senator, there are a few, you can count it probably with your hands, that are still out there, still trying to migrate to the government. During these times of austerity, I don't expect that this would be the time to migrate a lot of them over to the government. But the, the current law that was written, at least the enhanced priority placement, did have a, I guess, a sunset provision or a window where employees were supposed to have worked aggressively to get into the government and, and Department of Administration has been working successfully with most of them to migrate them in. Without having a listing in front of me, Senator, I, I don't know what to report other than to count who these individuals are and maybe, you know, also understand that some of them have been released for cause.
Larry, is that just answer as the Director of Public Works? So, have you absorbed these people?
I have absorbed at a minimum twelve employees from the GTA.
Okay. And then just get that information on the hundred twenty million dollars and whether or not that money is in fact in some bank account. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pangolin.
Thank you, Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I just want to go back, Larry, real quick to this $250 spare part for the bulldozer that's been sitting idle for two years and that has gone unrepaired, except for a $250 part. Can you give my office the part, the part number? The assessment that that's the part that's going to take it to fix that bulldozer? And I'll tell you, if it's for $250, I'll buy the part. I'll pay, even pay cash for it. But I want you to give me the assessment of the part and the part price and the part number, okay? Can we get that down here?
Thank you.
Because, I mean, it's just incredible that my good friend, Mr. Joe Duñez, you know, who is the former Director of DPW, knew that there was a $250 part, and he never fixed that bulldozer. Because, I tell you, I thought he was really, we send him up there to fix problems. And it appears from everything that we hear, he really left DPW in a huge mess. Because everything's been, because of the past, we're not doing things, fixing it for the future. You mentioned that you want to take some of the federal-funded positions and fill them up so that you can free up some of the locally funded positions so that you can apply those to the essential needs of the agency. Can you give me an example of where that has happened and what equipment that's been essential to the operations of DPW that was applied using that method?
Well, one of the things that the Federal Highway Administration would do is they'll buy what they call pavement marking machines, and that's the machine that lines the lanes. We're going to get those equipment and we're going to get them...
No, I'm saying where you've transferred costs that could have been absorbed by the local funding, you've transferred it to federal, and we freed up local and we're now more flexible, and we've acquired essential equipment for DPW operations. The reason why I'm asking this is, I know, for example, that at, maybe about a month ago, that there was a, you know, purchase order sitting idle or somewhere in this government for repair of machinery at the Ordon landfill that just sat there and the machinery was not repaired and so forth, and that we were not able to operate as effectively as we can. I mean, this is, these are coming from individuals that are in the department and work with the machinery, you know, on a daily basis or else deal with the operations of the landfill, where they're told, you know, they're told that the machine's broken and we haven't been able to fix it. And there's a purchase order that's been sent down and it's been on hold for lack of funding or whatever reason. But, you know, they've had no feedback as to why the delay in getting it repaired. Have we had equipment breakdown at DPW?
Yes, we do.
Have we repaired them in an expeditious manner?
Most of them we have.
And what is an expeditious manner in your definition?
Well, from the time it's reported, usually we have the parts in stock and we have a blanket purchase order, we can actually pick up the part. In cases where it's not authorized in the...
What was the longest length of time that an equipment was broken that was used for the Ordon landfill operations? Between the time it was broken and the time it was repaired? Was the shortest time?
What is the shortest time?
Yeah, one day?
We're still waiting.
You're still?
There is a track loader right now that is in Hawthorne, which is mid-pack?
Mid-pack.
Mid-pack, okay. And we're waiting for it to be fixed. And that in itself is a credit situation.
It's a credit situation.
Yeah, it's a credit situation that we've had to rebuild. Solid Waste has had to rebuild that in order for them to even accept to start the repair. They did the assessment, that machine has been down for quite some time. We turned, we got them to, even to accept it to assess. And now we're at the level where we've worked on our credit situation with DOA, thanks to Lou Perez and the people of Hawthorne, Caterpillar, that they'll now repair it. So we're at the next level. We've had, because of our credit situation, not just the DPW, but of all of Guam apparently, that Hawthorne lumps us into, we've had to go at interim steps, baby steps.
If the DPW solid waste operation is supposed to generate $5.8 million, and according to the sheet I have here, the Solid Waste Operations Fund funds the Solid Waste Management, Transportation Maintenance and Administration Division, total of 67 employees, at a cost of, I'm assuming here's like $2.9 million to run solid waste, and we're collecting 5.8, or we anticipate to collect 5.8, why do we have a problem with the credit for solid waste operations? Where are we taking that money and putting it to?
No, we're, like I said earlier, one of the things we're doing is we're funding a lot of the consent decree activities.
Now, I'm glad you answered it to that effect. You said that if we collected 5.8 million, that we collected above that, you could not spend that money. Why couldn't you spend that money?
No, first of all...
No, no, the question, Larry, is, when Senator Calvo asked you, if you collected more than $5.8 million in the solid waste fund, if you collect 6.3, I believe, and he asked you, what would you do with the collection above the 5.8? You said you could not spend it, you would have to come back to us for authorization. Now, what money and under what authorization are you using to spend money on the consent decree? Did you get legislative authorization to spend money on the consent decree, is my question? Do you have an appropriation? Do you have an appropriation to spend money for the consent decree?
Most of that money was, most of the money...
The question is, do you have an appropriation from the legislature to spend...
To spend solid waste operations funds on consent decree?
For the consent decree?
No.
No. So you could not spend anything you collect over the amount of 5.8 because you needed legislative approval? Yet you've decided, or somehow, somebody's directed you and to spend money that was not appropriated out of the solid waste fund for an activity that was not appropriated, of which no funding was appropriated, to DPW? Is that correct statement? There's no appropriation for consent decree compliance from the solid waste operation fund? Is there?
Allow me to get clarification on one thing, okay? Okay. I stand corrected, Senator. Learning today. One is, the amount that's appropriate is 5.9. The amount that we collect is about $4 million, a little bit over $4 million, as represented earlier. The amount that's for wages and salaries is about 2. some odd million.
2.9, somewhere, according to your stat here.
So the rest are for contractual, for equipment rental, supplies, and whatever the... Okay, so basically, we are working within the cash that we collect, not the appropriation. So we don't spend over the, of course, the 5.9. We certainly don't make the 5.9 as appropriate. We only spend within our cash flow that we can certify, we do have cash collections. I stand corrected on the consent decree. The consent decree is actually paid for by funds that's remitted from external to DPW into the Director's account, coupled with federal grants that we get to pay for a lot of this federal activity, this consent decree activity. So that's where the funding's coming from. It's from the BBMR and from, actually primarily from a federal source, and then from the BBMR.
Do we know the source of funding?
All I know is I...
For the federal funds, we are the recipient of a couple of DOI grants.
Okay.
And the other is the local funding coming out of BBMR, which is a...
So it's not charged against the department's budget?
No, okay. Are you saying part of the appropriation amount? When we are short of money or we need to engage in a consent decree contract, we either have a federal grant that we can use money to pay for it, or we request from the BBMR for additional infusion of money to pay for this.
Into DPW.
Right, into DPW.
But there is no appropriation specifically to fund the activities of consent decree compliance?
Not within DPW jurisdiction, no, I do not know of any authorization.
All right. So, back to this issue of the credit hold. Where, what other problems this DPW have with regards to its operations that is resulting in a hindrance of service? In other words, things are so bad before that we can't collect the trash. You came to DPW and we're still the same. I think Joe Duñez didn't collect the trash. We're still getting people collecting the trash, that we're not collecting the trash today. What is holding us up from, if we're collecting $4 million or $5 million from the solid waste operation? What is it, and we're spending $2.9 million for salaries of the current operations of solid waste? What is it that's causing us not to have the resources to fix the problem, to collect the trash? And we're going to cut DPW funding some more? So what is the problem? What in the budget is not there, if it's a budget problem, that we're not able to meet these obligations?
If it's not, it actually is a budget issue.
It is a budget problem.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we're going, and the solution to that is to cut the budget further?
No, that's not what we're saying.
Okay, then, what is the solution?
No, there's parallel tracks that are happening here. As you well know, we're being regulated by the Public Affairs Commission. We are having that dialogue with the Public Affairs Commission to iron out what are their shortfalls and what are the required operational changes, management changes, and administrative changes to effectuate a more efficient solid waste operations. That's one track that's happening as we speak, and we certainly would like that...
How is that hindering you from collecting the trash today?
No, it's not hindering us. It's just, it's a step-by-step process until we get to the recommendations, and then the PUC, there'll obviously be a corresponding petition before the PUC, wherein we will say we need a rate hike, if any, or we need this assistance or that assistance, but...
And you've gotten, you've gotten one rate hike so far?
Yeah, one entry rate.
And you have implemented that rate hike?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And that's taking its own track. Now, mind you, while that's taking its own track, we are still dealing with the day-to-day of what budget we currently have.
So, and if you have $2.9 million for staff, approximately, and you have, you're collecting $4 million, so it leaves you a balance of about a million, what is it that keeps you from spending that million dollars to making sure that we have enough equipment and supplies and repair services for the solid waste operation coming out of the solid waste management fund so that we can expeditiously fix these problems?
Actually, Senator, we do have a ledger that shows everything that we expend against that account. So everything that we're spending, the full amount that's being collected, there's an actual ledger that shows that we paid so much for wages and salaries, so much for contractual, equipment rental, services here, services there. We have a ledger, and I can show you that.
I know, but you spend all that, and yet people are still complaining. I'm saying, what more do you need?
Well, that's why we're working with the PUC. You've empowered them to help us with that. And so we're doing what we've been doing for the last couple of years. And the PUC, mind you, has been empowered in June of 2005. So they've started that track. We've been having the interrogatories and dialogue with the PUC and their consultant, Georgetown Consulting Group. So we're going down that exercise, and we've been having many work sessions with them, many regulatory sessions with them. And unless the PUC can work any faster than that, they're even having their consultant help us. So, Senator, we are working with them on that, and you've trusted that they would help us there, and they are helping us. And it's not an overnight thing, Senator. We are doing that. But until that management order, that end product comes to fruition, be it a rate hike, or be it a change in policy, or an RFP or whatnot, we are still with the same story of years prior to their empowerment.
And what I'm trying to get at, Larry, is that we have a funding source to fix these problems, and we're not fixing them and so forth. So is there anything at all, any operations of the department that is paid out of the solid waste revenues that supplement the other divisions of the department?
The supplements, there were some, there are still some, but very minor. And that's just a, it's...
What is minor?
Well, let's put it this way, Senator, I mean, when we first got in there, I guess in years past, Solid Waste Operations Fund, when it was created, it became...
I know Joe Duñez was really bad back then.
No, 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 this is, this is seven years ago, seven years. So, mind you, Solid Waste Operations Fund was a source to fund every Tom, Dick, and Larry under the sun. And then now, we've come in, the administration's come in, and we realigned it, where now Solid Waste Operations Fund funds Solid Waste Operations Fund activities.
So there's no other activity being funded?
Well, there's some things that are few, minor, like a person here, a person there, that are lingering. But that's because we cannot transition these people over without adversely affecting those functions. So there's a fiduciary role for me to ensure that until this function can absorb that budget, I cannot leave this function void and put detriment some of the functions and mandates that we have to carry out. So, Senator, we are migrating towards that performance-based budgeting of each of the divisions. It's just a few stragglers, and they're minor, that have to...
And just give me an idea for what minor is?
Okay, the committee of the whole was back in session.
Okay, to pick out where, the question was, as I understand it, where are some of those minor, I guess...
The question is, what's minor to you?
What's minor, okay. What's minor is, there are some administrative functions that were overseeing the entire DPW operations. For example, in our fiscal office, our mechanics that were doing, that were doing the repairs on not just packer trucks for solid waste, but also for buses and for semi-heavy equipment. Well, we are slowly migrating them over to do solid waste activities, but we cannot do a full...
I understand that. I'm just, can you just give me an idea for five positions, six positions, two positions?
I would say tech, no more than...
That are being cross-funded or...
15, 15 positions.
Okay, so 15, that's minor, okay. And so, and there, I mean, that's not saying that that's bad. That may be very well and very good, that you're able to utilize these individuals for other areas that need it. But again, it's just trying to develop, to pinpoint where the resources are being deployed and where they're most needed. And, you know, we want to ensure that we try to resolve this solid waste issue because that's just a bone of contention with people, and they want it. They're paying now a specific fee dedicated to that, and they expect that it'll be used for that purpose and that they will get the service, you know, in a timely and efficient manner. And if it cross-subsidizes, you know, that's the job of the general fund, to be able to fund the other operations of DPW that may not be specific to that. And as we move towards deciding whatever to do with the solid waste division, if we were to create a corporation, as has been one of the recommendations, then we probably could not do this cross-subsidization and so forth. And, you know, much like we can't use airport revenues for non-airport-related activities and things of that nature. So we need to work towards that. The other point I wanted to bring to you, Larry, is, you said that there's a hiring freeze at DPW. How long has the hiring freeze been in effect?
I believe April 1st was our magical date that we've been working with. But actually, we've been very reserved about hiring only since the beginning of the fiscal year, actually.
So only in the beginning of this fiscal year was there ever concerted effort to have an austerity program and so forth? Okay. And have you hired anybody since the beginning of the fiscal year?
Yes, we have.
And what would those positions...
Of course, the direct essentials, which is the bus drivers, a few engineers that were transfers, lateral transfers.
Any unclassifieds?
Yes, solid waste technicians, definitely. That's a revolving capacity, yes.
Are those the only unclassified position you've filled?
Unclassified, within this fiscal year, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that's the only one?
Oh, yeah, that's right. See, that's one out. Senator, I stand corrected. The consent decree does have one acquisition of a limited-term appointment. But again, that's the staff that's replacing a vacancy with an employee who left us, so... But, yeah, Senator, it's been very minimal.
Okay. Now, there was supposed to be, you know, the... Okay, now, now there was supposed to be, you know, the deployment of resources is, is critical, of course, as, as you well understand, in terms of trying to, to get the, the operations of DPW moving forward from, you know, the problems of the past and so forth. And yet, let me just ask this question Larry. Are there any positions at DPW that are not part of the staffing pattern at DPW that are, where the, you have individuals? And I'll ask Arlene, I, I knew you were Director and Controller of DOA, or I'm sorry, Controller at DOA, and yet I see you here at DPW. Was that a, create, did you create a new position at DPW of Controller?
This event happened before I got on board, but really what it was is, we needed the expertise of, of a Controller, a financial expert onboard and we didn't have, I mean, with her background, that's, she's been a major asset to our department, so...
All right, but there was no creation of a position at DPW for Controller?
I know, at least in the last couple of budgets, we have budgeted for DPW Controller, yes.
Okay, all right, so, so that position, there's, there's still a position at, at DOA for Controller, is that correct, Arlene? Or you have no idea? Okay, all right. Now, Larry, you, you have a deputy at DPW, correct?
Yes, I do.
And that deputy's function is?
Deputy, to, of course, whenever I leave, he would run the operations for me, but predominantly I have him doing a lot of, running of the operations, assisting in the operations. Operations Department consists of about 60% of our workforce and if you know the mandates and the, the magnitude of the activities within DPW with five divisions, five agencies if you will, I need not only one deputy, but I need actually about three more to help me with the, with, I guess maximizing on, on all those mandates. But right now, he helps me with the operations side.
Now, now Larry, you, you sent a memo to, to your deputy, basically that said, these are your functions.
Yes.
These are what I want you to do. DPW week activities, the Mag Hope Awards, the Liberation Day float entry, the Government of Guam Labor Day festivities, Thanksgiving Day festivities, employee recognition and Christmas festivities. Don't you think maybe you're under utilizing your deputy?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I mean, if these are the functions you, you want your deputy to do, I know your deputy and, and as you said, if you're using him for operations, I think you're going to, to gain the, you know, the, the benefit of, of his abilities, but if this is what you're gonna limit him to, then...
Oh, no Senator, if I may...
Did you write this?
Yes, I did, I did. In fact, in fact, I might as well share you, share with you the barrage of emails I send my deputy, because that is just the tip of the iceberg of what he does and I do...
Well, they're at the top. At least, I mean, they're at the top. Larry, I'm just trying to say that, you know, you're, you're trying to maximize your resources and yet you have a resource here that you seem to be under utilizing, I guess, is, is my, is my point.
No, there's, there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of communication that I need to share with you, I'd love to share with you. If I can send a soft copy so we can spare the austerity and paper copying, but yeah, I'll forward you all the emails I've sent the deputy.
Now, now the reason why, I mean, if, if the deputy's in charge of all this, maybe it's because we have a morale problem, you know, and, and so, and, and if, if this is what it takes to, to bring out the morale of the employees at DPW, then, then perhaps you're using the right person.
Yes.
You know, and so forth. But again, it's just the deployment of the resources to ensure that, you know, we get the people working together and doing the job that needs to be done, the deployment of the resources as they are realized by this government to ensure that we function efficiently and effectively and, and try to get these things done. I'm still concerned about this credit watch. How are we gonna repair the credit watch? Do we have a plan for that so that we don't have machinery sitting in a vendor's lot, basically, you know, in order to, to get it done so that we can give the employees their job, you know, the, the ability to do their job with the proper equipment?
Yes, Senator, I just wanted to recap to make sure I understood what I reclicked in prior discussions with my staff. One of the, one of the arrangements that we've been having with these private vendors is, you know, for these piecemeal items, we can have an arrangement, sort of like a, a site credit, if you will, to allow us on a small amount to go ahead and acquire certain things so we can continue the mission. A lot of the DPW employees have been very creative, they know somebody who knows somebody, you know, and they, they go that extra mile, you know, and, and talk to the primo, prima in that agency or that company. And they've been, a lot of concessions and they're going, we've been going down that path creatively, a lot of the employees have been very, very creative, again, just to, to make it happen. So, that's happening, but there's a, there's a bigger issue that, that's above and beyond our title and certainly it's, it's making us want to find a way to have these things funded by Federal Highway or by a federal funding source or, or some alternative funding source or even maximizing on how we procure things. You know, instead of buying the, the, cut a PO every month for something, maybe we cut, buy for the whole year or three months or, or maybe the reverse, if we cut it for the whole year, maybe cut it down to, on a month-to-month basis so that it's, it's a, we don't have this line of credit, if you will, running and get to a point where we are right now. So, we know that it's, it's a bigger problem than just DPW or any one vendor. It's a government-wide thing that you're, that's the reason why we're all down here, is to, to nickel and dime a lot of things so that we can live within our means, but, but certainly the bigger issue has to do with not just this one vendor or this $250 item, it has to do with the overall credit rating of the government from all the vendors that are out there.
But if we could isolate the funding source such as the Operations Fund for the repair of, of landfill and, and solid waste operations for machinery and staff and so forth, then perhaps that's one way of resolving this and separating, not doing a side agreement, as you say, but doing a, a straight-up dedication of these resources, the tipping fee for, for strictly solid waste operations so that we can be assured that when the employee says an equipment's broken down and we're, we have a budget of 2.9 million for up, for staffing and a, an extra two to three million dollars in, in operational resources over and above the staffing requirement, that we can take that money, isolate it and dedicate it to making the repairs for things like the bulldozer at, at the coral pit that provides cover for, for the landfill or the dump and, or the loader at the dump and, and making sure that we repair it so it doesn't sit. And I think that may be one of the things we may, we may make in this budget, is make that change and try to dedicate that so that you don't have these for the repair of the packer trucks so that you, you don't have them sitting there waiting for parts or waiting for a PO to be released because the general fund cannot support that PO. And so, I think that, that's one of the, the ideas that may come out of this. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Mr. Perez for the, your time today.
Okay, Senator Sasaki?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Perez, you mentioned a couple of things, I just want a clarification. In the consent decree, was there a declaration of an emergency by the governor?
Yes, there was, it's an executive order issued by the governor for, for the declaration that you mentioned.
Okay, so therefore the funding source you're asking for, for BBMR transfer funds as, as you need to?
That's correct.
To handle your funding needs for the consent decree, those are declared and handled by that emergency declaration?
That's correct, and thank you for that. Yes, that was the actual venue.
And therefore, there was no need for a specific direct appropriation to handle those particular procurements?
That's correct, thank you.
The other question I got is, is on the procurement issues that you had with this particular part. My suspicion is that certain vendors in our community are tired of this government collectively from many, many years of non-payment and when a vendor refuses to honor a purchase order, it's probably not that specific purchase order, it's probably a long history of non-payment or some unresolved past bills, perhaps?
Yes, that's correct, as I may, I can elaborate. Some of them, even knowing that they have an outstanding, will continue to engage with POs going forward just because they, they have that faith in the government that ultimately it would be paid. But yes, there are a few that we've come across that have actually engaged in additional purchase orders.
Yes, and, and so for those vendors, we thank them and, and I think, I think the real challenge is how to deal with vendors who are still upset with the government for unresolved past payables or receivables, however, however you look at them. So, I, I know we have frustrations in this body about how your department functions, but I, I think overall you're doing a, a great job. Just, please pick out my trash this Friday.
You got it, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do we have any other members that haven't spoken yet before I recognize Senator Sasaki, oh, Esbadon? Senator Esbadon?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll make this, I, I don't mean to take up a lot more time, it, it just, in thinking about what we were conversing about earlier in terms of the engineers, knowing full well that you deal with construction, you deal with highways and the essential nature of these positions, and, and then just to hear that we're down to two engineers, I guess that's only on the highway side, right?
Yeah, two professional engineers, DPW-wide.
DPW-wide?
That's correct.
Right, and you're saying basically that the problem is that there's no takers and probably one of the, one of the issues may be the pay grade that they're coming in at?
Oh, yes, too low.
And I, and I can understand that. Then, I guess the question becomes, have you ever asked if we can perhaps go to a special, an above-step type thing, I mean, that through the civil service or I guess in this, in this situation now it'd be DOA, right, who has purview over if you wanted to ask for above-step pay grade so that you can bring in engineers? The question basically is, have you, have you examined that, that avenue to avail yourselves of engineers?
Well, as a matter of fact, it, it wasn't until as recent as six months ago where we determined that, wow, nobody's supplying for these positions. So, had I known then, I mean, prior to that, I would have actually started that, that parallel or actually jumped on the bandwagon with the Guam Water Works Authority and the Guam Power Authority's legislation. They obviously have the authority now to do their own study and compensation study and whatever their findings are, I guess they, they can go ahead and, and recruit at that higher level. There is also a current law that this body has passed into law that I guess allows for the Department of Administration to determine the difficulty of recruitment and thus reclassify certain positions or even create new positions, more, with more ease to go ahead and, and do these, these above-step recruitments for these type specialties. I've not started that process yet, in fact, what I've done is, I've actually started to get a professional consultant onboard. That will buy me time for, so they can implement all this $120 million that's out there, chase the money and, and spent all these millions and not billions of dollars. And then while, while that's happening, it is then when we're gonna take a look at, that I would like to take a look at, our internal DPW staffing and audits and whatnot so we can true that thing up and clean it up. I'm also monitoring what GPA and GWA is doing on their compensation study so that whatever lessons learned there, I wanna adopt it towards DPW as well. So, you know, not that I can multitask or breathe and chew gum at the same time, but, but sir, I'm, I'm trying to get a consultant to implement all these projects, build all this infrastructure and while that's happening, the public is happy, all the infrastructure's being built, the economy's churning and dollars circulating, and then that will give me time now to focus in on a lot of those administrative things that can improve the operations of DPW. So, that, that's at least my approach.
No, and I, and I appreciate that, but I, again, I just want to at least put it out there that maybe it's, we should, with the impending buildup and the necessity that we need to get our infrastructure in place, we're gonna need those engineers?
Yes.
In our house, I mean, and not from private companies or anything else, but people who are actually working for the government and will be working in our best interest as opposed to, towards the profitability of any certain company.
Yes.
And so, I, I encourage you to definitely pursue that as quickly as possible. I guess the, the last question comes out to is, you know, after all this discussion, we've, we've identified problems within DPW that probably could be shored up and there is the necessity for more funds into this, the question then becomes, can you really afford to take this cut? Even though we're only talking about $200,000, but acknowledging full well that what we discussed today, that you could actually use more money to, so when we start talking about this cut, can you live with it?
Well, I, I think I mentioned this in a different fashion earlier, but every year, pretty much the budget that we're getting this year is the same that we got last year and I think what we're projecting for next year also is the same amount. Reason being is that what we've always been appropriated, the cash was actually substantially lower and we've always lived within those means. So, even if we were to cut from the appropriation, not from the cash, the appropriation, it really doesn't matter. DPW finds a way to implement the project. Now, to carry on a lot of the mandates? Yes, we can live within the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, Senator Ben Pangolin?
Thank you, just one follow-up question. Larry, you mentioned that, you know, that you don't have the manpower to, to design these projects and bid them out and so forth. It's, it's been a long time since DPW has designed its projects. I mean, you know, that was in the good old bad days where DPW did that. But usually Larry, in terms of getting projects out, capital improvement projects, the practice for many years at DPW has been, you bid out the engineering services, you bid out the engineering and design, you bid out the construction management, which is the inspector for the quality control, and then you bid out the actual work and the construction of the thing after you complete it. So, it's, it's, it really, the inability to get all this out shouldn't be because you don't have engineers on staff, because it's been a long time since staff engineers designed the projects and build the specs of the projects and then bid it out. So, I think that to say that you haven't been able to get these projects out because you haven't, you don't have the engineers on staff, is really not the way DPW is run in, 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 in terms of capital improvement projects. Because you always have, you build in the construction management as part of your bid, you, you have a, you bid it out, the private engineers design the projects and then, and then you bid out for the construction itself. So, somehow either, you know, we need to, to refocus then the effort on that and rather than saying, I can't get these projects out because I don't have the engineers on staff, maybe you need procurement people on staff or something else because in DPW and engineers just don't design these capital improvement projects. They don't design the highways, they don't design the bridges, all of that has all been privatized in the past. And I, I think maybe we need to focus a little bit on, on trying to expedite that process either through some kind of procurement acceleration or some other method of ensuring that you can get these RFPs out so that the private engineers can do the work, not the in-house engineers. That's not where we wanna go, I think. So, I just wanna just note that for the record, that really we can't say that we're not able to do these projects because we don't have the engineers on staff, because the engineering work has been a long time since all the design work's been done by in-house engineers for DPW capital improvement projects. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Then we completed the discussion on item G. So, any other comment, any, anything before we move to the next department? If none, I'd like to thank you Larry, your staff.
Thank you very much.
And so, your excuse. Think about it, maybe a minute. And the next agency will be the Department of Labor Manpower Development Fund. The committee of the hall is back in order, we are now on H, Department of Labor, on Department of Labor. I'd like to first of all introduce, why don't you, why don't you introduce it?
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Connolly, Director of the Guam Department of Labor. To my left is Helen Moffness. Helen is the ASO for Labor and HRD. And then also next to Senator Calwell is David De La Sola, the Director of HRD. And next to David is the Deputy Director of the Guam Department of Labor, Erica Ampinko. And next to Erica is Sally Cruz, who is our Administrative Assistant. We are glad to be here, so both the Guam Department of Labor and HRD are represented.
Okay, thank you very much, okay. On Department of Labor. Senator Pangolin?
Just, is the Department of Labor and HRD now a single department or still separate or...
It is still separate, however, we are complying with the executive order that the governor signed in 2003. So, in the intent of the executive order, we are working together as one and we continue to look at our power...
to look at our programs without, uh, as far as, we look at our programs, working together very closely to mirror image that of the U.S. Department of Labor Employment and Training. Uh, as far as the HRD, they are separate, they are, uh, they have, the employees are physically located in the same building as the Guam Department of Labor. The personnel records still read HRD. Uh, David De La Sola still has over, overall, as far as the performance evaluation and everything is treated as separate. But again, as far as, uh, working together to align our functions, uh, with the intent of the executive order, we're continuously working towards that goal.
So are the funding levels here under the Department of Labor, um, like for example, the federal matching grant in aid is 33,000. That's not reflective of the funding for HRD then, is it?
Correct, yes, sir.
Is that correct?
No, it's, it's not. The, it, what you have is purely the Department of Labor. David's presence as a partner is, uh, the strategy to meet the requirements as far as the shortfall requires, uh, collaboration with the HRD, and that's one of the reasons for his presence here.
And the HRD's still 100% federally funded?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Um, the general fund appropriation is 1.6 million dollars. Is that a, that's a reduction from your, um, previously authorized level, is that correct? At 2.25 is, is that kind of-
It was the 2.2, I believe, you're referring that includes the federal funding.
The 2.2 includes the workers' compensation.
Compensate, oh.
And workers' medical, uh-
The appropriation for workman's comp, um, benefits, basically?
Yes.
That's also being re, reduced?
No, no, the 2.2 includes workers' comp, medical benefits-
Okay.
Um, and the travel per diem for, uh, the, uh, employees that need to travel off-island. The 2.2 is inclusive with that.
Is inclusive with that. But in the reduction of, that's been applied to the department's budgets of 2.25%, you know, when they, when they reduce the budget according to the governor's submittal in, in Bill 74, is that, is, is that workman's comp benefits program, then appropriation also being reduced by?
As a contingency. The initial, um, 2.5%, actually, the department met, met it at a 3%, and that's only, um, dealing with salaries and benefits.
Okay, so, um, the, in meeting that, is that from current salaries or vacancies, not funded but not filled, or?
Current salaries and vacancies.
And I would like to address that.
Okay.
Uh, if anything, I want the legislature to remember is that, again, we continue to, to look at our functions, recognizing that eventually, if the reorganization goes through, the only division within the Department of Labor and HRD that's really going to be impacted by this, uh, uh, you know, collaboration or, or the reorganization is the fiscal and support branch. So in, in line with that, and, and we're also working very closely with our federal project officer, because 66% of the Department of Labor funding is from the federal officials. So in line with the reorganization and in line with all the things that we are doing to prepare ourselves for this growth, uh, we then looked at the fiscal and support branch and identify those positions that are locally funded and those, the locally funded positions that are also doing the same function for HRD. So in so doing, and, and again, it was just based on a recent visit with, uh, the U.S. Department of Labor officials, David, myself, and a, a board member, we then confirmed that it is very appropriate for us at this time to do the cost allocation. The cost allocation is then identifying, uh, we only have one ASO, once upon a time, HRD had an, an administrative assistant. When she left, we knew then that it would not be appropriate for us to hire her because we were moving towards that, uh, uh, you know, as far as the reorganization. So the three positions that we identified that are locally funded, that are actually also performing functions that are of similar nature, providing that support to HRD, is our ASO, our personnel officer, and a program coordinator. So the first rung, as far as meeting that, uh, cut, is to take these three positions and re-identify that by, uh, 50% of the funding, uh, for, to the position, the ASO and the personnel officer, and 75% of the funding for the, uh, program coordinator to be funded by HRD will give us the more than 2.5%, that is what we're looking for right now, to meet the governor's, uh, new budget requirement.
Okay, so, so basically, you're, you're being allowed to kind of like, uh, have an administrative charge to HRD-
Yes, sir.
-for that position that's at Department of Labor for the services provided to that-
Correct.
And in doing so, you're able to reduce the, the, the local funding component of that matched position-
Correct.
-and therefore resulting in the savings you need in order for-
Yes, sir.
-you to meet the mandated reduction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolin. Senator Frank Blaz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, good afternoon, everybody. We are very encouraged with, with, um, the presentation and quite outstanding, and I need, the, the question each begs to be asked. Can you afford additional cuts?
If, if we, the answer is no. If we are looking at additional cuts and we have to take it on the local funding because we recognize the, the situation, what we're looking at, and, and thank goodness for the relationship that we have and we continue to build with the U.S. Department of Labor Federal, is that we, we are looking to them, towards them, as far as giving us the funding that we need to prepare ourselves for this growth.
Okay, um, I'm looking, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here with my, with my figures here, but it appears that, um, your initial appropriation level was 1,668,486, right? That's just for the operations, not including the workers' comp?
Correct.
And it's going to be reduced to 1,660,001,19?
Correct.
Okay, so that is, it's going to be reduced by $8,367.
Senator, the original appropriation for Department of Labor is 1.702686.
Okay, that's, that's in 1.7?
That does not include workers' comp.
Okay.
1.7 is our original appropriation.
Okay.
So the reduction, uh, with the reduction of 1.6, and again, looking at those three positions where we're going to cost allocate, we're looking at overall on an annual basis, really, is 100, over 101,000.
Okay, and I, I see where, probably the numbers were a little bit, uh, off, is because I was basing my figures on what I, we got from BBMR-
Okay.
-in as far as allotments, uh, today, and if you, trying to find it here. Okay, this is where, and, okay, the, uh, we got this from BBMR a couple weeks back, three weeks ago, actually. And it basically shows that, um, general fund appropriations for Department of Labor was 1,668,486. Um, okay, and now it's 1.7, what is it?
The original appropriation is 1.7 million.
1.7?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If it's going to be reduced at the 1.6, we're saying that based on those cost allocation, if you were to add up the total number of savings on the 2.5, it's going to be over 101,000 dollars.
Okay, I'll be, that, okay, that, that figure, it's 101,000 dollars. The other information, piece of information that we were provided, this was as of March 13th, now, obviously, this is over a month ago, or going on over a month ago, was that the Department of Labor had already, year-to-date allotment up to March 13th was at, uh, 1,298,384 dollars that you had been, already been authorized to expend.
Correct.
Okay?
And again, the, the, in the explanation, at the onset, uh, we wanted to make sure that are high-end ticketed, like our rentals, our contractual, that we basically, uh, make sure that the money is available for us. So the, the allotment of the 73%, .6 at the onset was something that we asked for.
Okay.
But as far as, we're not using it, again, keep in mind that we're not using it as quickly as we would like to, again, because they, as I mentioned earlier, that we wanted to make sure that we secure the funding for rental and secure funding for other contractual obligation that is really a necessity for us to operate at the department.
Okay, with that, for the rest, the remainder of the year, fiscal year, which is six months, doing very quick math here, this leaves you with a little bit over $400,000 of general funds that you've left, that you've got left in your allotment.
Mm-hmm.
And that's already subtracting, you know, the hundred and some thousand dollars that you're going to get reduced from your budget, that is called to reduce from your budget. You can live within those means.
Yes, sir.
And Helen, correct me if I'm wrong, you said your contingency plan here was that if you needed to reduce a little bit more, you're going to look into workers' comp?
Actually, what, what, one of the things that we were looking at for workers' comp is not a, um, a great, we were just looking at the travel. Um, workers' comp has been, um, working diligently with the local, uh, providers, and because some of our clinics provide off-island, um, their doctors come in from off-island, the travel hasn't been as much as it, uh, would have been in the past, in the past couple of years, so if there's going to be a reduction, it would be in the travel, um, for, uh, off-island services.
The other thing that I want to add is very recently, and again, because of the relationship that Guam has with the, uh, medical facility in the Philippines-
Mm-hmm.
-and also recognize that we're beginning to see more of our people, if they have a need to go off-island, for them to go to the Philippines versus going to Hawaii or, uh, to the West Coast. So we, again, we can anticipate to see a reduction on the travel as far as the, uh, workers' comp area. Travel in that, if they do travel, it's much closer to, and a much cost-effective to send them to the Philippines versus sending them to Hawaii or the West Coast.
Okay, and I'm looking here at, uh, at 28,150, and so you've got, what, 908, 900, 930,000 dollars, right?
Yes, sir, 930,000.
So if you wanted to use that as contingency, how much of that can you afford to reduce it by?
50,000 in travel funding.
Okay, so it's, it's reducing the 50,000 because most people now are going over to the Philippines as opposed to-
Yes, sir.
-Konas and Hawaii.
Yes, sir.
And you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Blaz. And with that, Senator, no, no, Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, from HRD and, uh, from the Department of Labor. You know, I was very pleased when, uh, the governor issued his executive order, sort of putting you folks together, uh, to work closer and to coordinate your talent in your two agencies as well as the, uh, resources available to you. And, uh, I'm hoping that in the near future, we can formalize that by law, that integration, uh, to make it even work better. The, uh, major concern, of course, of the public with reference to your agencies, and that's why we have to be very careful about any cuts to the Department of Labor or to the Agency for Human Resources Development, is the fact that people out there need jobs, and they need to be trained for jobs. And I know you've embarked upon some very aggressive, uh, training programs, and that you've actually been, uh, recruiting individuals into those training opportunities. Now, can you tell us, uh, Mrs. Connolly, how would this affect the training initiatives of your agencies if we were to see a cut at this time in your budget?
If, if we need to cut in the local funding, and actually, what we have done, uh, even at the onset several, even since last year, is we're looking at systems, we're looking at the way we operate things at the department, and in the operation, we're simplifying things. Uh, if anything, we have really taken advantage of technology. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, for example, alien labor processing, knowing that that is one area that is locally funded, that we really need to beef up. So our administrator is really looking at different forms, automating those forms, making it a requirement for employers to come in and, and submit their reporting requirement by electronically. Uh, the other thing that we have been doing across the board is, I firmly believe that, for example, uh, Waitan Hour, Workers' Comp, OSHA, those are the areas where we have gone out and did a lot of training. So by training the immediate supervisors and the managers and in training employers, you give them the right tools that they need to know and understand so that they'll help you. So we have been, we have been, I think, very successful in working with employers, working with the government entities, and working with the supervisor-